Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I'll advise, and I will now open the meeting. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the One or All people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Sesnok Local Government area. To lead us in prayer tonight, we have Reverend Nicole Baldwin from Sesnok Anglican Church. So please come forward Reverend Baldwin. And I'll ask councillors to be upstanding.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we pray for the council of the city of Sesnok, its members and officers. Direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us. Guide their speaking and listening to be considerate and generous. In all their talking, thinking, planning and decision-making, give them courage to say what needs to be said and humility to accept decisions with which they do not agree through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Baldwin. We'll now move to, there are no apologies. Are there any requests for leaves of absence? No? Move to the confirmation of the previous minutes. Someone moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Speaking councillor Olsen.
Yeah, yes, thanks Mayor. Last meeting I asked a question of the general manager. It was taken on notice. I just asked if you could give us a report on what the answer to the question, please. Do you want to know what the question was?
Yes.
It was about the sixth investigation into me as a councillor and why it wasn't brought back to council.
Through you, Mr Mayor. The investigation wasn't substantiated, which means it doesn't come back to council.
So that means I was innocent? Is that what you're saying? Not substantiated means I was innocent? They don't have to come back to council? Okay, only the guilty ones. Thank you.
So, no further debate on the minutes. Put those, the tronack in record, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Disclosures of interest. Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, sorry, I've just filled out the wrong paperwork. I'm going to have to fix that. This is disclosure of interest for BN slash twenty twenty four. It's non peculiary interest, just due to working at one of the businesses on Wall and By Road.
So it was in regards to BN?
I still stay in the chamber. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I filled out the wrong piece of paper in the quickness. That's a different one.
Okay.
BN two, yeah.
Any petitions? Not aware of any petitions. Public address. So tonight we have speaking on reports WI one twenty twenty four, Mr Brett Wild from Hunter Anzac Memorial Limited, who is speaking for the recommendation. So, Mr Wild, please come forward to the lectern. Mr Wild, you'll have three minutes to address council.
Right, thank you. Thank you Mayor, councillors, general manager and council staff and visitors. Brett Wild's my name. I'm the chairman of Hamel, which stands for Hunter Anzac Memorial Limited, previously the Brankston Greeter Memorial Cycleway Limited. For those that aren't aware, two thousand seventeen, the journey started with lobbying the council to complete the cycleway which had been planned since the early two thousands. We're currently now twenty years on and the cycleway still remains uncompleted. It needs to be reminded for those that are not aware that the charity was instrumental with the support of the Governor General and the then-general manager and people like Justin Fitzpatrick Barr to have council endorse the allocation of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the pursuit of the charity to get council one point nine five million dollars to complete a project of three point three kilometres, Brankston to Greeter, at the cost of two point six million dollars. Council were fortunate enough on the back of the work of myself, my board and the Governor General to receive those funds. The project is very important to the community of Brankston and Greeter. There is no connectivity between the two towns. There is no way for children in Greeter to travel safely to the pool in Brankston and there is no other connectivity or bus service. In two thousand seventeen eighteen, we rewarded the title of Anzac by the federal government, which was endorsed by the Governor General. Coming up to the hundredth anniversary of Anzac, where ten thousand two hundred and thirteen Hunter Valley men and seventy five women left the Hunter Valley to serve in the Great War. Of those, one thousand nine hundred and eighty nine did not return. Three hundred and twenty one of those were from Brankston and Greeter. They constituted something along the lines of forty percent of the entire town male population. On a side issue to the quite substantial contribution that Sesnok has made, in two thousand and nineteen, the charity put on the Greeter Army Camp Celebration. You need to remind yourselves that in nineteen thirty nine, Australia declared war on Axis forces. Then Lieutenant General Blamey was tasked to raise sixty thousand men as Australia's first contribution to World War Two in Greeter. In Newcastle, ninety percent of the steel that was produced by BHP in those war years went to the war effort. In the Hunter, we have something to be extremely proud of. Can I have another minute?
Councillor Hawkins is moving an extension of time, seconded councillor Painter. Not debate, all those in favour. It's unanimous.
So I'm here tonight to say that the charity is in a position and we want to put in the first memorial on the cycleway. We do understand the complexities that council has faced in relation to the completion of that and by no means are we going to add commentary to that. I believe that council has found itself in a difficult situation along with the general economy, increase in prices, right? And we have always supported the council in its endeavour to complete the cycleway. Yes, we may have had differences along the way, but I think some of you, I'm here tonight to remind you of the reason why we've got to this point. So as it stands, we do support you a hundred percent in however you resolve to fix and build the cycleway. And I commend you for working hard behind the scenes. But I also would like to resolve that you need to remind yourself that there was a resolution of council in twenty twenty that endorsed Hamel as the sole purpose authority or organisation to build the memorial aspects. Sorry, I've run over.
So that's it? Do you need a further extension or you're?
Just a few minutes if I could finish, please Mayor.
So moved to get councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Moores for one, you get one further minute and that's all?
Yeah, yeah. So I'll speak quick.
So, so all those in favour, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Judd and Saval, those against councillor Olsen. I'll declare carried.
So quickly, I'm here to commit a hundred thousand dollars on behalf of Hamel to put in the first memorial. We need to realise that the Governor General, Lieutenant General David Hurley, AC DSC retired, the current Commonwealth Governor General, is the patron for the charity and gave this project patronage. He retires from his position on the first of July this year and I think would be remiss of us if we do not have an opening ceremony on the current, the current path that's there and then look to put our memorial in and have Sesnok Council and the Mayor open that for Remembrance Day this year, irrespective of the status of the rest of the project. That's all I can say and I'm happy to take questions if you wish.
Okay. Questions for Mr Wild, councillor Olsen?
Yeah, thanks, thanks Brett. The memorial you want to put in, you have the money for that?
Yes, we do.
You do? Do you need, what do you need from council to help you with that?
I just need a clear path to approve a design because there are design considerations for memorials that are set down by the War Graves Commission and the government in relation to how they should be done. We are prepared to do that in accordance with the rules and regulations and requirements and happy to enter into an agreement with council that we will pay for it. We will commission the works, undertake the scope of works, whatever council needs, and then enter into the management agreement like community halls are done for the long-term management and repair and maintenance of that facility. We do not want to add a financial burden onto council. And then as you complete more of the cycleway, we will then add the total of seven reflection points that we commissioned drawings for, which for information, cost the charity some sixty thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen to actually undertake that work.
So, and all those will be installed by you as well?
Everything's been done by, by the charity. We are quite a financial charity. We're doing a number of other veterans related projects, especially down in Sydney and we have, I don't say this flippantly, but we get money not only from the government, but from philanthropy and we currently have an operating budget of some nine million dollars to go out and do memorial works for veterans. We all turn up to Anzac Day and we say lest we forget and we remember them. Do we honestly actually believe that or we just play lip service?
Yeah, yeah. So, so you need the pathway finished by November?
No, I, I can put the planned position of the current memorial is to the southern side of the footbridge coming from Greeter on the right-hand side. There's a large grass open area there. Some of my directors have met with council staff, including Warren Jeffrey, for example, and it's been agreed that that is a nice open space for a decent memorial to, to honour those men as a sort of commencement of the project. And as you complete it to Greeter, we'll then follow suit, working in conjunction with council, which we've always wanted to do.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I just, I just want to hope that we can get it finished for you. The sooner we get it done, the better. It's been too long.
Yeah, but I think missing, like, I think it would be remiss of us not to, because the Governor General, whether we like it or not, put in a lot of lobbying work behind the scenes to get the one point nine five million dollars, right? And I think that as a final farewell to him, because he did put faith in me and you as a council at the time to give patronage to a project, you know, dedicated to them. And I should remind council too of that nineteen hundred odd soldiers that died, over half of them have no known graves anywhere in the world. You know, this is not just about a memorial, it's about education, you know, and it's about respect. We don't glorify war. We say this is about mateship, commitment and sacrifice. There's nothing I can tell you, having gone to Afghanistan, there's nothing glory about war, I can tell you.
It's just, we should never forget what they have done for us.
Okay. Question councillor Moores.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Brett. And all I can say is that your passion is unspeakable. It's fantastic. And I feel sorry for you that you've been messed around by council over different councils, over different years. And I think, aim to the Mayor, that we have to get straight behind this cause.
So is this, is there a question in this one or are you going to say this in the actual dealing with the motion?
I'm for him. As far as I'm concerned, if you have any problems, just look me up because I will fight for you.
I, I think that council and quite a number of people, and a lot of you know who you are or who the people were, have worked very hard with us over years to get to where we are. I just, look, this is just road spikes in the road, you know? Yes, it's, it's sad that it hadn't been completed. It's sad that it wasn't completed for the hundredth anniversary. But I think this is just a minor trial, a train being derailed. You know, let's put the train back on the track and work together. And we're prepared to put our money where it is to make the first memorial, you know, with seating and water bubblers and, and to make it nice so people can see a vision. I think when people see a vision, they'll get behind us and you, I think. You know, I'm not here to apportion blame. I think there's no, you know, there's lessons to be learned, but I mean, we've got lessons that we could have learned as well, so.
Okay. No further questions. Please thank Mr Wild for his presentation.
Thank you.
We'll now move to dealing with WI one twenty twenty four. Moving that way councillor Sander, seconded councillor Hill. Debate councillor Olsen.
Yeah, um, yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. The report says that we're two point four million dollars short of funding, like on what the quote was of three point six. So we've got, for the allocated budget for this project, there's one million two hundred and sixty five thousand left. What is council, council's going to do it ourselves, and I have no problems with our staff doing it ourselves, but how much is this going to cost us? We haven't got a budget in here.
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Olsen. We have six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars remaining of the grant funding. We have six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars remaining of the grant funding that needs to be expended by thirtieth of June. We've undertaken a tender process to have contractors undertake the works and been unsuccessful. We're committed to making sure the project is completed with the focus on expanding the federal funding by the thirtieth of June and completing the project by the third quarter of this year.
Yeah, but how much is it going to cost council?
We're in the process of redoing the estimate with our internal staff to revise our costs, but the six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars of the grant funding is committed for the project.
Yeah, but you're still not telling me how much this is going to cost us. We had a quote for three point six million to do the, to complete path. And we've got one point two million sitting there for this pathway. Surely we would have had a budgeted idea of what it was going to cost council if we did it ourselves. But it's not telling us in the report what it's going to cost council. That's what I want to know, what it's going to cost council and where do we find the rest of the funding if it goes over the one point two million dollars?
Councillor Olsen, we, we don't have the, the estimate back from our internal staff because we've negotiated with them since the closure of this tender. And we, we are, we're waiting on that estimate to come back in order for us to refine the cost. With six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars remaining of the federal funding is committed to the project and the remainder is, is being determined through the estimate internally.
Yeah. Look, I'm, I'm frustrated here because I'm not getting an answer. Surely our council staff, before they've brought this report back to us to say that three point six million is too much and we can do it ourselves, surely our council staff would have worked out a guesstimation of what it was going to cost us. But you're expecting a council here to say, here's a free rein, go and do it. There's no budget costings in here for us to understand. I want this pathway done. I should have been done a long time ago. It should have been finished. But I don't know, and not one person in this room knows what it's going to cost us. So how can, how can we, can you give us some information of where it's, what, some idea what it's going to cost us? It's got to be cheaper than three point six because we're going to do it ourselves. But it's going to be over one point two surely. Like three point six can't be that far over the top of what it's going to cost council.
Councillor Olsen, I don't do guesstimates, I do estimates. And I believe I've answered the question.
Sorry?
I believe I've answered the question around cost.
You haven't told me at all, all you're telling me is-
We're not here to debate-
I want to speak on this one.
So, you've been speaking on the motion. You can go back to, there was a lot of debate in that, that wasn't a question.
Well, I want to get it clarified on what it's going to cost us. All I've heard was that we have six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars we have to spend before the end of this financial year. We don't know how far that's going to take us. We don't know how much this is going to cost us and how much it's going to go over budget and what's going to push our, put more pressure on our budget to get this job finished, which should have been finished many, many years ago. The costs keep going up every year and this is what's been delayed. And for us to come in here tonight with a report with no costings to say we can do it cheaper, you're telling us we can, but you don't know how. You don't know the difference between what the total price is and what it's not going to be. This is a problem we have here because we've got a budget coming showing us tonight with thirty million dollar deficit and yet we can't work out how we're going to finish this project, finish it off completely because we don't know what it's going to cost us and where do we get the money from. I'm sorry, but I'm just, I'm, I want this project to go ahead. I'll vote for the motion so it can go ahead, so council can start doing some work on it. But I just, I am so frustrated to think that we can come in here without even having a guesstimated amount of what this is going to cost us.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you Mayor. This is, to say it's a long-winded issue is an absolute understatement. This is one of those issues that actually inspired me to run, to run for council because I watched this path just be delayed and delayed and want to be a part of that solution. And I actually recognised the last delay that occurred to stop it actually crossing the highway. I think that's sense and sensibility. I think that has to happen, but gosh, I'd love to see it in my kids' lifetime, that's for sure. Before it's too late, I can hopefully still ride a bike with them. So just a couple of things. We obviously talked about costing then. It was noted that the tender period was extended by fifteen days. Was there a reason for that occurring?
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thanks councillor Watten. The, the tender was extended for an extra period because there was no interest in the original timeframe. We extended the timeframe to allow the invited tenders an opportunity to quote for the, for the project. And we had, out of the four tenders, we had two provide a price and both, and this was the cheapest, the cheapest price, value for money price, and it was still way above the budget that we have allocated for that.
Okay. And it was also noted that two tenders were received, but one LSG civil was late and not considered. How late was it and why was that tender price not put to council?
I'll take that on notice councillor Watten. I don't know-
So I thought I sent these through like a while, but I probably didn't get through to the right avenue, but yeah.
Yeah. It was, it was over the closure date for the tender, so it couldn't be included in, in accordance with our, our protocols, our procurement guidelines. So we excluded that from the, the tender process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Okay, so how much was the grant to actually do the whole pathway? Do you know? One point nine it was.
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Judd. The, the grant funding was for one point nine five million dollars.
And was it a dollar for dollar one or?
I can't answer that question. It was, it was one point nine five million dollars and council provided the funding for the remainder to have the three stages completed.
Do you know how much we'd have to pay back if it's not finished by the thirtieth? So it would be the one point nine, whatever that we'd have to pay back by the thirtieth?
It would be the remainder, the remainder of the funding that's sitting, the six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars that's, that's sitting with us at the moment.
Oh, I thought it was the whole lot. That's what I've been told before. If we don't finish any project that's a grant funded, it's the whole grant pays back.
It depends on the funding requirements and I'm not across the details of the funding requirements. It was initiated well in advance of my engagement with council, so I'm, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
I can, I can understand that. So it could be nearly the two million that we'd have to pay, pay back. So if I vote yes on this tonight, is it okaying any amount that this could come back at two million, could come back at three million, it could come back at one million? Is that, if I, if I vote yes, that could happen because it's not got a budget? Is that right?
No, no, we have an allocation of two point four million dollars in this year's operational plan.
Yeah.
And we've revised that through the quarterly budget review, but we have a six hundred and sixty five thousand dollar commitment to meet by thirtieth of June and I'm invested in making sure that that happens.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know. I want to vote for this pathway, but it's just a little hard to vote for it when you don't have the final budget in front of your head. So, thank you.
Just to be clear for councillors, significant changes through budgetary processes, like this one will carry over into next financial year and therefore the budget will be adopted by council when we go through that budgetary process. So you will see the amount as we get to that point. Councillor Sanders, closing debate.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. What a wonderful project. This is a fantastic project. I've been trying to get this over the line for many, many years. For the extra little bit of cash that we're going to have to find to get this done, it has to happen. The people of Greeter and Brankston have been asked to wait and wait and wait for this project. It must be completed. We need some connectivity between Greeter and Brankston because of the amount of traffic on that road now due to the expressway, the exit from there. We need to keep our children safe, so therefore we need to make sure that this pathway is completed. It doesn't matter what happens, it needs to be done. So I congratulate our, our staff for taking it on board because if no other contractor wants to take it on board, we have to do it ourselves. It's going to probably cost us a lot more than we thought, but we need to make sure it happens for the people of Greeter and Brankston. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sandra. And just before we vote, there was one other thing I should have mentioned in the last comment was that, that, and a memo that has gone out to councillors in regarding the quarterly budget review statements, that it does recommend allocating back one million dollars into this year's budget for this project. So, from the budget that was already there for it, there was over two million dollars for it and allocating a million dollars back. There's, there was, from memory, two point three, two point four million dollars in the budget for it. And when the tender process was having issues, it was recommended to come out. Since we've put forward a resolution to deal with the, the project itself, the memo has gone out and is recommending that one million dollars come, come in.
Question on that, Mayor. The, the, the original funding was two point four million, that's what you're talking about. And there's no extra funding there for this pathway than the original two point four million dollars and we've spent one point two million or whatever, one point three million dollars already. And so we've got a million dollars left that should have already been in the budget. There's nothing special, nothing, no special allocation. It's what we have there originally for the budget, for the whole project. And we're now going way over budget on this project. That's exactly all we've had, two point four million, nothing else.
Councillor Olsen, there was more than two million dollars in this financial year's budget for this project. It's in the operational plan. We'll, we'll get to it when we deal with that, that thing. But let's vote on this item. All those in, in favour? Unanimous? We'll now move on to another public address tonight, speaking on item number BN two twenty twenty four, Wall and By Road Forum. We have Tracy Harrington speaking. So, thank you Tracy Harrington. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Saval, councillors, council staff and fellow residents. I'm here tonight to speak in support of councillor Daniel Watten's motion that our community needs to be consulted and informed collectively at a formal sit-down function about the Wall and By Road upgrade. And I'm here to ask all councillors- And I'm here to ask all councillors to vote in support of his motion. I'm speaking um on my own behalf and also on behalf of many other disillusioned residents who feel that the current consultation process has been inadequate. For those here who are unaware, myself, my husband and myself, we are the owners of West Cessnock Pharmacy and Post Office. We have operated on Wallonby Road, upon their premises on Wallonby Road for almost 25 years. We have a vested interest in the Wallonby Road um upgrade as it directly affects um and impacts upon our livelihood. And because of this, I've attended almost every consultation event council has provided. I've attended the focus meeting at Cessnock Library, coffee with a councillor both at the Providore and at Currie Library. I've been to the pop-up session at Wallonby, sorry, at the Plaza um in Cessnock. And I've watched both live feeds presented on Facebook by uh the mayor. I've attended two council meetings where this matter was discussed and I've watched several other council meetings that have been on YouTube. I've submitted emails to all councillors, you've all received something from me. Um, and I've forwarded many questions um to the private consultation firm. Um, they have, that were employed to speak to the community and I've communicated directly with the mayor, Saval and many councillors. Now, after such considerable effort on my part to involve myself in the consultation process, one would think that I would have a clear understanding of the project and the impact it would have upon my business and the, and the nearby residents, but that is definitely not the case. I have received so much misinformation from the paid consultants, the project team, councillors and senior council staff. The answers to many of my questions, particularly regarding uh street parking, have been contradictory. But the most concerning to me is that um I have been, after being informed both verbally and in writing by council that parking is a priority, I've been advised on, by two separate councillors. One advised me to sell up while I still can and the other was if they were me, they would relocate. That hardly gives you confidence that the council are listening to and acting in the best interests of residents and businesses on Wallonby Road. Our community, we need transparency. We need direct and open communication from all of the decision-makers in this project simultaneously. We need less one-on-one discussions because these only lead to the misunderstanding, misinformation and it creates mistrust when the messages.
councillor Hawkins uh moved an extension of time, councillor Painter.
Absolutely.
So one minute uh extension of time, all those in favour, unanimous?
So these one-on-one discussions only lead to misunderstanding, misinformation and create mistrust when the messages are not, not consistent. And also the reliance on council website and social media as the tools to inform residents has also diminished the effectiveness of the consultation process. I cannot count the number of our customers, many of them elderly, asking me for updates about the project as they have no access to the internet and they look upon me as a trustworthy provider of disinformation. They mistrust our council because they feel left out of the process. I have the signatures of two, over 2,000 residents from our business alone support um about this matter because they are confused and they are scared. They signed the petition because they don't feel that they have, many have an avenue to voice their objections. Much needs to be done to rebuild public confidence in our council and this project. Confidence that people making decisions are listening to our community and acting in their best interest.
Further extension.
That's a fast one.
councillor Hawkins, councillor Moores has seconded. Uh, those in favour, unanimous?
Right, thank you. One, sorry, one only has to count the signs on Wallonby Road to realise the public has lost their co- their confidence in council regarding this matter. And I'm not talking about the purple save Wallonby Road signs which are plentiful. Count the increasing number of forced sale signs appearing between West Avenue and Abbotson Street along Wallonby Road. These are the true representations of the public sentiment about the project and the current consultation process. Councillors, let's restore public confidence by speaking openly and collectively to all in an open public forum and support councillor Watten's motion. Thank you.
Do you have any? Questions for Ms Harrington, councillor Olson?
Yeah, thanks Tracy. Um, I, I know it's difficult to get up in front, in front of everyone and speak. Um, you have a business which employs approximately 20 people?
We do, our staff currently is 19.
19, so this, if you lose parking?
Uh, we will lose parking.
If you, you lose parking, you lose jobs?
Oh, so, yeah, absolutely.
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 And just the other, one other question, um, there's a lot of people saying that's misinformation, misinformation, misinformation. And that's because of the way the, the forums have been held now, like coffee for council or whatever.
Absolutely.
This forum that councillor Watten has put up tonight, with three forums, do you think that will just take away the disillusion and the misinformation that has been spread around the community now?
It will, it will certainly re- remove the mistrust, I believe. Look, we talk about misinformation, in my case alone, I've been told by councillors and council staff, one, that they're, um, I will lose parking. Um, two, I will lose parking on both sides of the road. Um, like that, there will be um uh a clear way. And then, no, there won't be a clear way, you know, the pedestrian crossing will go. No, it will be signalised. There'll be, we could, we could do a cut-in, so you could have a 15-minute parking, you know, cut into the footpath. I mean, that's just my case alone, so you can understand why when I'm told something, I have great mistrust. But I feel if, if it's told collectively, we all hear the message at the same time, there is a sense that we're all receiving the same message. And I do understand that it's been very difficult for council because the report hasn't come back, so there are so many unknowns. But don't give us information that is not accurate because that just makes us become very mistrustful.
Just one more, one more question if I may. The, when the report does come back, because I don't know when it's coming back, um, but when it does come back, we, do you believe that um everything that council had planned before in three forums like this will be, give you enough time to be able to all get your concerns to council before we vote on whether we proceed with it?
So uh councillor Olson, I'm not really sure of what the timeframe is in that consul process, consultation process. Like I believe the report comes back, um, it has to be costed, environmental study is done. And then is it presented for public submission, is that the case?
I would think so, we should have a, we should have a costings, we should have the environmental studies and all that should be done in this report. If it's not, if we haven't got a costings, how can we proceed anyway? Um, but yeah, I, I would think all that would be in the report and then what they normally do is put it on sp- on display for 21 days. But this, with this forum, three forums, that'll take it longer, it'll mean longer. But do you think it's, we need to take as much time as it, we need to get it right?
I think a project of this magnitude that affects so many residents and businesses deserves extra time and attention.
Yes.
So that we can get it done right, correctly and try and, and listen and, and address the concerns of all stakeholders.
Thank you.
councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Saval, thank you for your um presentation tonight Tracy, to keep you on the hot seat a little bit longer. You mentioned before, um, Ian asked a lot of my questions about why public forum would be suitable. You mentioned before, look, you may just need to move your business. Now, what is your actual business, um, just for people that don't know, I know, but.
Sorry, it's very hard to hear, I'm not sure.
Sorry, can you hear me, can you hear me?
Yeah, so, so you're asking about moving my business?
Yeah, so what kind of business is it and is that possible for you?
Okay, so we're a pharmacy post office and our government regulations state that we cannot, we have very quiet restrictions on where can, we can move to. We can't move closer to other pharmacies, um, so we cannot head to other shopping centres because there are other pharmacies there. They can object and, and the pharmacy board will reject any movement uh in that respect. Um, and we also need to be on a main road because obviously to, for customers to access us. And, and if there is four lanes on Wallonby Road and no parking, I don't know where we will be able to move to. Yeah, we have a five kilometre radius.
Five kilometre radius?
We cannot move, yeah, it has to be over five kilometres uh away from other pharmacies, I believe. My husband would know more about that.
Yeah, okay. And just with regards to other business owners, you mentioned people coming through, you've got a petition in place. You said over 200 people come through and sign, sorry, 2,000.
Oh, 200, 200 people daily come through our uh post office, we do an average of 180 transactions a day. Um, and the pharmacy does, yeah, prescription count, I don't know if I'm allowed to say, but probably about 300 prescriptions a day. So it's a very busy business. We do have parking at the rear, a lot of uh um people have said to me, oh, will you have parking? And our staff currently park there and of course, if, if parking was reduced, our staff wouldn't park there, but it's not safe access. And you only have to come and have a look and see that it's a one-way driveway. You can imagine the number of cars going accessing in and out of that and people on the footpath walking, try, customers trying to walk down the back to that car park. That's, yeah, not, not suitable or safe.
Yeah, and obviously you're not the only business owner in town that's concerned, you know, and you're talking amongst yourselves. I'm assuming, yeah, over 60 businesses that occupy Wallonby Road all share the same concern. And would they, to your knowledge, as you're speaking on behalf, as you mentioned, would they appreciate a town hall meeting to get everything on the table?
Yeah, you only have to look at the attendance of the previous one, the unofficial one that was held, um, that was gathered by um businesses um in a very short amount of time. Um, there were over, I, I, I don't know the actual count because it's um probably over 250 people um plus at that meeting. Um, and there was a sense of anger at that meeting, I'll admit to those people, those councillors who did turn up and, and, and went on stage. But I think the community were angry that the people who um they thought council staff who would have the answers that they require were not in attendance. So I think that, that, that built up that sentiment of, um, yeah, it was, yeah.
Seeking transparency. Seeking transparency, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just remind councillors, this is an opportunity for questions. We will have an opportunity to debate uh the motion later on councillor Dunn.
Thank you Tracy for coming. Just a couple of quick questions, um, you said you've been there for 25 years. If this, if this actual DA came to council in 2009 and there were conditions of consent around that back then, were you ever notified in any way whatsoever around?
Absolutely not, and that's, that's what astounds us Paul, and I think we were made aware of this. I think it was late, oh, it was 20, I think it was just after the grant had been funded and I think there was a, a photo shot um shoot at the front of West Cessnock School about the grant funding for it. That was the first time that we had um became aware of it. Now, we, we owned the building right next door, so if we were aware that four lanes were happening, I never would have sold that. We would have utilised that as a car park, so it just, yeah, we received no notification. I would have thought that all residents along Wallonby Road, when that application was approved and, and the criteria of that application was that um for, the, the four lanes and parking, it was going to affect their residence, that they would be directly notified, but I just don't believe it, it was the case.
Okay, and I guess the, the only other question I've got centres around the notion of a, of a forum or, or three forums. When, when you get to the point where we've, we've had what happened at East Cessnock Barley Club with regard to this and the way that was conducted, my personal concern is around duplicating that again and, you know, what actual benefit is that to the people that want the information? Have you got any thoughts on that?
I just have a question, I don't quite understand, so what do you mean duplicating what again?
Well, basically, it was quite a ruckus, there were people.
Were you in attendance, because I was in attendance, I didn't see it a ruckus. There were people who got rather heated, but it was very, I mean, Mr Paul Painter, you took the chair and it was um, yeah, very, I think quite well dealt with by yourself. I don't think, I don't think you were in fear of your life, were you, of fear of residents?
We're, we're not here to debate back and forth on.
I'm simply asking, I'm simply asking, do you believe that you're going to get what you want out of a public forum?
Absolutely, absolutely councillor Dunn. I believe that um a formal sit-down community meeting where the community given opportunity prior to the meeting to submit questions, so council and council staff know what they're going to address. I mean, yeah, I just don't see, yeah, I think it would be, that's what the community want, that's what I hear. That's what I hear from residents um that coming into my business.
councillor Groan.
Thank you Tracy, um, hello again. Um, uh, yeah, we, we did speak and I have a, a couple of questions for you. Um, how many car parks does your business currently have, um, like out the front that I didn't hear earlier?
Okay, that, uh, at the front of their business, I can hear you clearly, I don't know what the echo is with other people. So we have um at the front, I would say 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, maybe 10 that are in, because you have to understand that the majority of our, not the majority, but a, a, a large portion of our customers obviously are elderly. Um, elderly people tend to visit pharmacies a lot more, um, are in poor health. So I'm just doing in a probably a 50 metres either side of our shop. And fortunately we have the pedestrian crossing, so we have probably the same amount of parking across the road. And I would love to do a, a motion, time motion and be able to present that just to show you how many uh, how important parking is to the continuance of our business.
Great, and how many car spaces did you say you had out the back for your staff?
Approximately 10, but it's not the number of spaces councillor Groan, it's the, the access to that space. Um, there is not, it's not wide enough, uh, a development's happened next door that the property that I did say that I've owned and sold. A duplex has been put on there with a large uh fence beside it. So the dr- the access to our parking is one car width, you cannot even walk beside the car. We're very lucky, very fortunate that the Australia Post vans, um, some of them cannot come through there, it's so narrow um that we have the parking at the front for them to stop and to load and unload. Um, so there's no quest, there's, it's, it's not suitable for a public car park. Our staff park there because they can walk through the back door. You know, safety-wise, we can't have customers come through the back door, we can't have them walking through our dispensary and we can't have them walking through our safer area. Um, but yeah, this, it, it's not suitable as a public car park at all.
Do, do you feel that your business will grow if we say, you know, there's an extra 10,000 people in the vicinity of your business within the next?
When we heard the, about the development itself, yeah, we were very pleased, you know, we knew that that would have a positive effect to our business. But when we heard that uh a criteria of that development is four lanes and the parking issue, I'm still not, don't know what the answer is, but you know, the fact that it will affect our parking and just that, yeah, it will affect our parking, I, I know that for sure. Um, just to what extent is, is the unknown.
So the, the fear is, is out there amongst the community, especially the ones on Wallonby Road. Do you believe that you will leave, will lose all of your parking, is that, is that where you're at?
It depends councillor Groan, it depends which councillor or council staff I ask, you know. I've, I've had seven different answers about that and I understand they don't know.
Okay, so you, you, you do know that we don't have that report back yet and we, we don't have those answers for you. Um, a- a- and I just wanted to mention, because we have spoken on this.
So we're, we're finishing questions?
Sorry.
Yeah. So councillor Groan has the floor to finish.
No, it's fine, continue please.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
The, 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 I explained to you about, we, you know, we're pretty much ripping up Currie Main Street um as we speak. And we're, we're going through and we're redoing the beautification works for all of those shopkeepers there. And we have, we as council currently now, uh, we should have had that job finished. The reason we haven't had that job finished is because we've been dealing one-on-one with every shopkeeper. Do you foresee that we as council will be at that same point at, for the Wallonby Road residents and shopkeepers? Do you believe us to be, to be capable of doing that?
I, I would not be using Currie Main Street Progress Project as an example of great consultation with community and a successful project. I mean, I don't live in Currie, but as a business owner, I feel that works to be happening for as long as it has. Um, two, I just think of the post office, two Christmases that are trading, Christmas is in retail probably will in terms of us uh in Australia Post, Post Office, 80% of our trades at Christmas. Those businesses have lost two Christmases because of the roadworks out the front of um their premises. So I certainly hope that council have it a lot, lot more organised when they do do the Wallonby Road upgrade, in whatever form it takes.
Thank you.
councillor Moores, your, your question and we'll try and keep.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you Tracy. Okay, so my questions are, obviously as a business person myself that's been through staff and staff is more like family, uh, and they become like family because they work for you for a very long time, many, many years. So with your business, I'm only putting myself in your shoes, I'd say you would be at the moment on hold, not knowing what to do.
Oh, absolutely, and, and I actually welcome the report coming back because I think at least if we know what we're dealing with, we can make a plan, but at the moment it's very difficult not knowing for everybody. And, and when you said, and staff are like family, being um in the area for 25 years and servicing the West Cessnock and Billbird area for health needs as well, a lot of our customers are like family. I know their first names, their children's names, you know, the thought of um their, their worries and concerns about their homes, about. about access to their residence, really upset me as well.
I remember going into that shop with Mr. Ryan fifty years ago, so you've been there a fair while.
Yes, yes.
Uh, the problem is, what I've seen happen, Trace, is is that I feel that the way it's turned out, this schmuzzle, is there's a lot of scare tactics have gone on and there's a lot of people and businesses that I spoke to don't know what the hell's going on, or whether they're going to be in business next year. Do you feel that's that's what's happening?
Oh, it's it's a definite concern, absolutely, it has, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because you're listening to what someone's telling you and and then, as you said, someone else comes and tells you something else. It, you know, we haven't got the final thing. This is this is what makes you go great, you know, because you've got not got it. So all I'm saying is is that at the moment, we don't know about it. And I feel sorry for you and the businesses and I've spoke to them. And it's a hard road, but we're behind you. Thank you.
But I think also, um, sorry.
Yeah.
Councillor Moors, just to answer councillor Moors' question, I think that um, but when we do know what is happening and what is hap is going to happen, then I think we should have a meeting that the customer, um, councillor Watten has suggested, that we should hear that information all at once collectively, openly, rather than little whispers to little, yeah, conversations, I shouldn't say whispers, little conversations to different stakeholders.
Final question, councillor Judd.
Thank you Tracy for getting up there and getting debated instead of questions. I just want to ask you, access to is only via the front of your business, it's not safe access via the car park. This notice of motion is purely for you to get the information for your business and your livelihood, where you can openly get your questions answered, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, please thank Ms. Harrington for. We'll now uh, move to report BN two twenty twenty-four, uh, where councillor Watten has the floor. You're moving your resolution. Uh, seconded councillor Olson, uh, speaking on that, councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. At the time that I submitted this, there was an obvious need, it wasn't just one business owner, it was several people contacting me and this is a small-knit community, it's a great community that we have and everyone knows each other. So a lot of people came to me and discussed their concerns. And again, the same concerns are reiterated, that different information, different silos, individual talking, it was just creating a lot of misinformation out there. So my original emotion set to try and put that aside. Now, when I went through the delivery program, it actually mentions in there, and I referenced that in my notice of motion, and it's um, five point three point two A, conduct regular development consult consultation forums. In my short time in council, I've never seen a forum. And if there was ever a need for a forum to occur, it has to be this, it has been so contentious, there's been so much going on. And not for the sake, not just for the sake of our um, our residents and our businesses, it's also for council staff. We to convey the information out there in a timely manner and to be efficient. Um, there were concerns about safety as well. I think that we can actually do it in a safe manner, in a forum-style session, where it doesn't have to, the 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 fear of of worrying of reprisal or angry residents, we can mitigate those. We can mitigate that. And there is a lot of concerned people, we need to get the information out there on the table. So I do have an amendment to my initial, my my norm. Um, now, like I said, when I I submitted this notice of motion, I essentially took for granted that a briefing session would be automatic, because it usually is with big projects like this. Councils would be, you know, once the reports come back, we'd get the briefing, public exhibition, the the standard practice. So I took it for granted when I put my notice of motion in. I wanted this forum-style communication to happen in concurrence with what we already got in place, to make sure that we tick every box possible, so there's no way that any kind of misinformation, there's no cause for concern or accusation could get out there. Let's get it all out there, let's have our conversations, take copies with the councillor, everything like that. But everything's kind of what we found as a moot point until we get those reports back. So, yeah, for the actual amendment, I did send it through. Um, I don't know if said, if I have to read it out, if we could put the amendment up, um, so dot point one.
I think dot points, I think dot points one to three are the same, uh, one to three are the same.
That one's mine, so uh, dot point one, and I can send this through where possible. So organize a councillor briefing at the next available date to be briefed on the Wallonby Road Upgrade Project, Initial Design Investigation. Is that part, would you like me to send it through or?
We just pause for a second, just for the for the minute. So dot point one to three from the other one are the the same?
Fairly similar, yep.
So if you just copy and paste. Yeah.
No, it's different.
It's different, that's different. That's different, that's someone else's motion.
That is someone else's motion, yes. Um, but the the three points, I think of councillor Watten's.
How can we have a briefing on the thirteenth of March and we haven't got the report back yet?
Well, that's what we're requesting.
You're going to get the report back before it's finished.
So for the preliminary initial.
So councillor, what you you, this is your motion, so you move then what?
Yeah, so next available date, I don't know if it's possible for the thirteenth of March. Can we get it thirteenth of March? Is that?
Will we have the full report back by then?
Well, for the initial, or requested initial, we'll forget the full, like later when it comes. Would it be easier if I sent it or would you like me to read, I can? Well, sorry, yeah. Email, okay.
What's your name?
Sorry. Oh, India, oh.
Just uh, maybe it's just easier to read it and uh, it can be typed. Yeah, if you just read through it, councillor Watten, then then it can be typed on the screen.
So do you want me to read out verbatim? Okay, just one second. Yep. Okay. Okay, so dot point one is organize a councillor briefing at the next available date to be briefed on the Wallonby Road Upgrade Project. Initial Design Investigation. Okay, dot point two, dot point two is note that the review of environmental factors will go on public exhibition after the briefing for the community and other key stakeholders to provide comments and slash or feedback on the proposed works. That's fairly similar to point two. And then dot point three is note that the project team will continue to engage with the community and stakeholders. You're doing well. Community stakeholders throughout the public exhibition period. Yep, okay. Dot point four is the the um, essentially the original. So in addition to point three, council is to organize three public forum meetings over three separate weekends regarding the Wallonby Road planned upgrade once the relevant reports are completed and presented to council. And then I've put in there to invite the mayor, councillors and all other relevant staff. Yeah, well hyphen, I'll put four hyphen, but it can be point, dot, dot point five. Um, relevant staff involved, including the general manager himself concerning the Wallonby Road Upgrade Project. Okay, we've done that. Um, the project design team should also be in attendance.
Is this just the final two points from your original motion?
Yep.
Yep, so if you can copy points four and five from the original motion. Second was councillor Olson, you're happy with the amendment? So it's now, that's now the motion. Um, and you've got, yeah, two minutes left to continue um, your debate on this.
So essentially all being said, and thank you for keeping up with that verbatim, that was on on the the spot there. Uh, this is all about communication. The communicate, community is always, at us councillors in particular, I know they're at me all the time, um, what's happening, what's going on? Where's the communication? Like I said before, this is the most efficient way to make that happen, the delivery program does allow for it. We essentially then advertise it, so therefore it's a, um, it it should be a given, uh, this approach of this kind of mag magnitude with the amount of businesses that are potentially affected, surrounding residents, this this needs to happen, a hundred percent needs to happen. And the, to put in there, initially I put in S, East Cessnock Bowling Club, Cessnock Supporters Club and Bellboy, Bellbird Workers Club. Look, location's not the predominant thing at the moment, but we do need a good capacity. So two hundred and fifty, three hundred people would be great um, at any given time. It, look, I I, to get all the information broadcast at the same time in person, you could also live stream it as well. So everyone, so if you can't get into the hall, so people that are actually genuinely affected by this can enter the hall, get the information. We've got the technology, broadcast it via live, then it's done, no more misinformation, here it is, there's the facts, and that's why we put this forward, thank you.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to foreshadow this amendment.
Yeah, so you want to move an amendment, so we've got a motion in front of us, so there's an amendment to that motion.
Okay, so I will read the, I will read it out to you, the amendment, for, that's the one down.
The one coming on the screen that was submitted earlier. Yep.
For the people at the back that cannot, cannot read it. Uh, the council is, uh, one, I request that the general manager organizes the council briefing on Wednesday, the thirteenth, to be briefed on the Wallonby Road Upgrade Project, primarily Design Investigation and Community Engagement Plan. Two, I note that review environmental factors will go on public exhibition after the briefing for the community and the stakeholders to provide a comment, feedback and proposed work. Three, note that the project team will continue to engage with the community and stakeholders throughout the exhibition period using the options and tools highly available and highlighted on the Wallonby Road Upgrade Community and Consultation Engagement Plan, which is aligned with the council Community and Participation Plan. Four, I request that the general manager ensure all residents and business people have the opportunity to access the same information regarding the Wallonby Road Upgrade Project by holding multiple, large-scale, community information sessions for the residents and business people, and that the councillors be invited to attend these sessions.
So seconded councillor Burke, uh, now speaking on that.
Yes, I'd like to speak on that. I cannot see a reason at this time for three meetings until it has been put on display for twenty-one days, letting the residents view the display and the businesses of Wallonby Road and have the option on the matter. So everyone is on the same page. Then let the residents of Cessnock tell the council what their thoughts are on Wallonby Road. But to have meetings now is a waste of time, because all this is doing is playing scared tactics with the people and getting them upset for no reason at all. Please remember, I've been against this from the start. One person sold the house last week for forty-five thousand dollars less, just so they could get off Wallonby Road. But enough is enough for playing scared tactics on people's lives. It is not what I am about and I will fight these four lines to the end of Wallonby Road. Thank you.
Councillor Judd.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I speak, that's going to get voted on yet, because I want I want I want Dan's notice, like his amendment.
Yep.
Yep.
So we're, well, we're debating the um, the amendment at the moment, but.
I just want to make sure I was in the right spot, okay? So after reading the director's commentary about this notice of motion, councillor is claiming that this motion potentially inhibits and restricts the community consultation process. The project team and community cons consultants are using the plan to ensure there is a com comprehensive, flexible and effective engagement with the community and stakeholders. Well, the stakeholders are the residents and the residents are requesting a town hall meeting. Yes, you did do a live Q and A, but a lot of the questions couldn't be answered until the one point seven million dollar report comes back to council. And you've done a coffee with councillor session, claiming that now is consultation, yet the coffee with councillors wasn't for Wallonby Road, but turned into Wallonby Road because the residents wanted to know. Yes, you've done the sessions in the library in the Woolworth Plaza, again, questions couldn't be answered. Why can't we have a public meeting? Can you answer the residents' questions? Will there be parking kept on both sides of Wallonby Road? There has to be a shared pathway on one side, what's the size of that and will it fit on the footpath? Are the boundaries of the properties on Wallonby Road having any changes? If so, who pays for it, are the people compensated? What is the ramification if there's still only two lanes and some traffic lights instead of four lanes? Memo dated on the thirty-first of August states, the need to investigate for four lanes by no means requires construction of four dedicated travel lanes. Can you answer if there'll be clearways or if it will be four travel lanes? If this is not able to be achieved, would council remove parking from all businesses and residents? What's the width of the road, will four lanes fit? The legal size of the road width is three point, three, three point five, you have to request to go to three point two, is that correct? What's the width of Wallonby Road? You need nineteen point two metres, is that correct, for six lanes at a minimum? Most of the Wallonby Road from near maps is about twenty-one metres from people's property boundaries, not the footpath. So where is the footpath going? Will council be sued if they don't do four lanes of of travel? Fifty the September twenty twenty-three memo, would council be sued if they don't do four lanes? The response was, to answer your question directly, please be advised that Cessnock City Council are not currently involved in any legal action with the developers, however, a risk of not fulfilling obligations in relation to a day, any day DA may be addressed by initially legal action. When would construction start? What's the traffic plan? Would you be sending traffic down Matheson Street? Will council be fixing Matheson Street after the completion of Wallonby Road and putting in a safe footpath there? I'm voting for this tonight because this is about community consultation, to be open and transparent with the community. I'm voting for this tonight because this is about community consultation, to be open and transparent with the community. I was elected to represent Ward Eight and every resident that has reached out to me about Wollongby Road have stated their concerns. Why isn't council listening to us? Well, I'm listening.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, can I ask a question, please? The amendment that was put up there by councillor Moores. Can I get, wind that up, please? That's what we're discussing.
Yes.
All right. Um, what do you mean by holding multiple large-scale community information sessions? Do you mean what councillor Watton has suggested, or you mean library sessions or Providore sessions, or what?
Councillor Moores.
Councillor Wal, uh, Olson, uh, I put that because it's not just, uh.
I know, I never, I asked a.
Just, excuse me, please, do not be rude, you've asked for an answer, I'm giving you your answer. Do not be rude and do not down talk me.
Point of order, ma'am, point of order, ma'am. That's out of, that's out of line. I've, my question was, what does he mean by large-scale community information sessions? I'm why you put it there.
I am explaining it to you.
Councillors, the question has been asked, and now I think councillor Moores needs to be given the opportunity. Um, we're not here to debate the questions, we're here to debate the motion, and so, uh, he can, can I answer the question? Councillor Moores.
Why I put that is because there is Elalong, this Paxton, this people further out, Countryway. It's not just Cessnock, Bellbird, West Cessnock, it's large multiples. If it's gotta be held in the, in the, in the auditorium down the street, in Vincent Street, so be it. So long as the people can get in there and there's plenty of room for the people to get in, and no one is turned around. And said that they cannot get in, we're full. I don't care if it goes to the PCY down the bottom, down, down here. So long as the people can get in and listen and go home with ease of mind of what's going on Wollongby Road.
Yeah, councillor Olson.
This, this is what our forums are all about, and that's why we suggested three, uh, three sessions. After the reports come back to council. And, um, I'm, I'm, I'm a bit stunned at why you would put an amendment up like that and rush this issue. When we, clearly we haven't got any reports back at this stage. Unless people in this room know more than I do, I haven't seen anything come back to us as councillors. Unless someone's keeping information away from it. Now, if we are, we've got two, what, three weeks to thirteenth of March. When do we expect a full report back? Can I ask that question of our director of works?
The director.
Thank you councillor Olson. Thank you councillor Olson. The, the project team are in a position to present the report and the concept design. At the next councillor briefing, which happens to be the thirteenth of March.
Oh, so someone, someone knew about it, but I didn't. Okay, interesting, interesting. So how, so we get, we, what? I'm, I'm, I'm interested to understand, councillor, ma'am, are we gonna allow everyone to talk?
You're debating councillor Olson, so you have the floor.
Are you gonna shut everyone else up, or have I gotta, have I gotta do that?
Well, I, I heard most of the, the noise was coming from the gallery, to be honest, um.
You didn't, you didn't hear councillor Hawke, and you never do.
I'll allow you to, to continue councillor Olson, councillor Olson.
Okay, so it does say in there there will be a councillor briefing, yes, but it doesn't say we've got, we've got preliminary engineering reports. We have not got anything else. There's no other reports, preliminary. How are we gonna, what's the point of having a briefing on a preliminary report that we cannot share with the public? Right? It's, it's, it's gonna be more misinformation, that's what's been put out there by plenty of people in this room. Misinformation. I know the mayor did one day at Providore. He told one lady one thing and he told the person standing beside him something totally different. Now, that is true, I've got facts, it's fact, and that's, that's where the misinformation comes from, it's from the people in this room here. Not from anyone else, it's not from the stu-, not from the people sitting out here, they don't know. I don't know, because I don't get the information, I don't sit in the, in the office, ma'am, and get the information that you get. That report, will that be provided to council to be able to take home on the night? Will that, will that report be provided to us, to take home?
The director.
I'll take that question on, that is, um.
Okay, so if we can't take it home, so is it a confidential session, is it? Is it confidential?
The director.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, thank you councillor Olson, yes, it will be a confidential session because we haven't completed the review of environmental factors. This is an opportunity for the council to be briefed on the design and the investigation to date. And provide feedback in a closed format before it gets released to the public.
Right, so what's the point of having a briefing if it's confidential, if we can't go out there and tell anyone what's in the brief, what's in the report? And the reports, how far away is a full report that we can give to the public to sue?
Taking that on notice, taking it on notice, yeah.
Taking that on notice, so I'll get an answer next month. Okay, so what, the problem is here, we're gonna have a briefing on the, on the twelfth of March. Or thirteenth of March, sorry, thirteenth of March, to discuss a report that we can't talk with the general public about, that can't go anywhere. Can't go out on display, can't do anything with, we can't take it home, we can't tell anyone. And we have more misinformation going out to these people again. What this, what the original motion was about was making sure we'd stop this misinformation. So the director that put in here saying this is gonna impede, impede the process of getting the information out there, is totally incorrect. This is in addition to what everything else has been done. The misinformation that goes on by everyone, public meetings, the library down here, young, one young fellow got thrown out because he asked too many questions. Like, how the hell is that right? And how is it that these people, these people are fearing for their lives of going, I. I had to reverse out of a house up there on Wollongby Road last week, and I can tell you, it's not easy, even though it's only two lanes, it's scary. If we, if we're gonna force the chemist and post office to park people down behind the post office. They're gonna have to cross two lanes to turn into that post office. To park in there, to drive down a one-way lane where your car could be coming out. Then pedestrians are gonna be walking up and down there as well. How ludicrous is that? We've, I know there's a business selling up and getting out now, I know that because they're scared. I know the residents are worried what's going to happen, and they're worried that they're not gonna have their parking. I can tell you, if anyone here was gonna take their parking away from the front of your houses, you wouldn't be happy about it. I'm sure you wouldn't be, and just, what it's gonna do is gonna affect everyone around there. So we need to make sure we get, we vote down this motion here, the amendment. We vote it down and follow, we've got councillor Watton's put up, they have three public forums. Anytime after we've got the report out on display. Once it's out on display, then people can come there, not with questions having been written down and handed in before you come in the door. Ask on the day, not be scripted, and we're gonna have a scripted report, we're gonna have.
Time councillor Pinter has the floor.
All right, um, just like everybody just to calm the animal a bit and trip, I know people are passionate about it and their, and their, um. Uh, properties and their, um, business, um, livelihoods depend on this. Um, first of all, I wanted to make clear, I'm very, um, all for public engagement and, um, public consultation. And, um, proper information, my preferred option is, is to defer the, the motions for a month until we have the report. Um, we have heard, literally, it's the position of the Save Wollong, Wollongby Road, um, committee. Um, possible impacts on property values, access to properties, parking and businesses and residents, that's not lost on anybody here. Uh, we have to balance, uh, as councillors, competing priorities. Um, improve traffic flow and capacity for a growing city, we all, we all acknowledge that and accept that. And, um, we all know that Wollongby Road needs some work. Um, developing undertakings that council have entered into to protect council's position, to be sure, uh, we don't, um, get sued. I know, I believe, I've been told that, uh, we need to have upgrades on four intersections a, a, and a, and a minimum. The future residents that are coming to Cessnock, um, we're a growing city, it's gonna grow, and we need to have the infrastructure to accommodate that. But, please don't call out while I'm talking. Um, to look after as far as is possible and look after the residents and businesses that are already here. Uh, and now, and on all stakeholders, we need to, um, um. Everybody here will need to compromise somewhere, I think, to reach the best possible amicable solution, and so good consultation is essential. Um, if a town hall type meeting, uh, were to go ahead, um, I also want to speak to, uh, Daniel Watton earlier to, at dinner. To, um, so it's orderly and, and, and a good format, I know people are passionate. So to have people registered to, to come along and have their questions submitted, uh, say two days earlier, forty-eight hours in advance. So those who are on the panel will have a chance to do a bit of research, try to answer those questions, um, pos-, um. May be prepared with the answers that they, they can, they can give. And lastly, um, to, to, um, know that we as councillors are here to protect the interests of those residents, um, that, that are here. Um, we all need, um, growth, I've been in the area for thirty years, I'm, I'm responsible for ten families moving into this area. I think it's a fantastic area to, to raise a family and to, and to live. And, um, and as far as it's possible to listen to the people, um, and to, um, come up with a compromise or the best possible solution. Now, to this, to this problem, um, um, Wollongby Road in some way, shape or form is gonna go ahead. Uh, we're committed to that, um, it's, it's the format which we have, um, semi-import on, that's all, thank you.
Thank you councillor Pinter, councillor Watton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Savile, um, look, in, in closing.
So you're, you're, you're not closing, you will, you will get a write a reply at the end, if you wanna write a reply, but at the moment you would be speaking on the.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. So, write a reply is after we've dealt with. Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Yep. Look, well, in, in, in closing, um, just wanna address one thing that was, uh, spoken by councillor Moores, this is not about creating more fear. This is reducing fear and getting rid of it, what's created the fear is the siloed approach and the different styles of communication that's been going on. The open forum has to be the way to go, and whatever way we look at doing it, like, I can envisage, I've got a, a billion different ideas of what an open forum could look like. We could have people registered, that's one thing, we can have people send through questions, that's another. We could also have a time there where people actually have the ability to speak off the cuff where they need to, because sometimes things come up just like a council meeting. Um, I, I, there, there has to be no more cloak and dagger with this, there has to be, you know. When we've got the provisions there in our development, um, programme to do this, this is the time to pull the pin on this. So, I need, yeah, we do, we do need to get this right, we need to get this right. And the way to do that, and, and to rebuild that trust with the community, is have open, open and transparent communication, that's all.
Councillor Butt.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, I, um, I will be some more supporting the, um, amendment, um, as I second it. Um, but more so because I think it provides me as a councillor with more information. Um, and we heard from our speaker tonight that, uh, she's heard. Different information from different councillors and disappointing to hear that councillors are saying that they should just close up shop. Or move out of town because I'm certainly for the progress of this town. Um, and unfortunately, sometimes decisions in this chamber are not popular ones. Um, I guess with the motion that councillor Moores has put forward, um. A key point in there is that the briefing will also include the community engagement, um, plan. And, um, as Tracy said tonight, misinformation, um, and I, I think it'd be an opportune time for councillors to. Get information or get updated about the progress of the engagement. Let us have conversations around that, let us appreciate what has happened and, and where there's some learnings, um, being taken away. I don't believe councillor Moores's motion is rushing it because it's actually very similar, um, in context in regards to. Uh, getting the community heard and, um, I've been on council now since two thousand and sixteen. And I don't think I've ever heard the community say that they agree with, uh, the consultation period. Um, though consultation happens from the start to the finish, no matter whether we're building a road, whether we're building a park. Uh, whether we're making major changes to policies, consultations all the way through, and this, this project hasn't finished, it's not even nearing. Ready, um, and, you know, we, the preliminary report, um, that has been probably talked negatively about tonight is exactly what we need. Because it's going to give us a start, it's going to allow councillors, and if it's in a confidential session, I'm fine with that. Because I think it's important that if there's information that gets in the public, then that is misinformation, because you're in a confidential session. Um, I've taken, uh, my role seriously, and that confident information is kept with me until I'm told that I can't. Uh, but it'll allow councillors to get on the same page, uh, and if there is misinformation in the, uh, community, then that's the best way, uh, to do it. We, I guess I wanted to talk about what councillor Moores alluded to a little bit as well is. This, this project affects more than just Wollongby Road. Uh, it infects, um, people that live around those areas, um, you know, we'll be, be creating rat runs. Uh, when the works are being done, um, we have people that live in Millfield, uh, out, all the way out through to, to Wollongby. Um, and we've got people that will be living in this area that haven't even thought about living here yet. And I think that one thing that this council hasn't done good enough in the past is have that forward thinking. Um, and think about what does things look like in twenty years' time? And when this development was passed, um, it was agreed then that there would be the four lanes. Um, and, or a, an upgrade to the road. Um, we, I wasn't here when that was approved, but it's here now and we have to deal with it. And although it's not popular, um, we have to think about how many people will be living in Bellbird and, and out further in Millfield. That possibly will need to get into town, and we can talk about bypasses, and I was heavily involved in consultation many years ago. With bypasses in different parts of this state, and they, you may as well close up shop in Cessnock because you're pushing everybody to Green Hills or to Charlestown. We may as well not have businesses in the main street. Um, again, not popular, but I'm, I'm allowed to have my viewpoint just like the community. Um, I don't think public forums, uh, open slather is the way to go, I totally support, um, pre-questions coming in. Because we've seen tonight, if you come in here with a question that the staff don't know about, they can't answer it. They can't have everything at their fingertips, um, and an open slather public forum will not work. They don't work, um, having a constructive session where the community can come in, that's had their questions preloaded. And get the answers then is definitely the way to go.
Councillor Groan.
Uh, thank you, Mr Savile, I support councillor Moores with his amendment. I am all for transparency and I wanna get the public all the information that's necessary. But, you know, there's, there's rules and, and regulations that we have to abide by. And I, we understand that car parking is essential, we understand that's what you as a community want. Um, but, you know, we don't know those answers yet, no, I, I'm all for a confidential session to get those answers. Um, but interestingly, what the, one of the first things I learnt when I became a councillor was, no one owns the road reserve. No one here in the whole LGA, and not just this LGA, is entitled to off-street parking, that's the reality. That is the regulations, and I was amazed by that because, yes, I agree. I want my off-street parking just like everyone else, but it just doesn't exist. So I a hundred percent agree that we want, we need to, to do this the right way and get them the right information. So I support the amendment, um, and, uh, I hope this goes ahead. Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, look, just, just briefly, I think it's probably all been said, um, either way. Um, either way, whether this amendment gets up or the original motion, um, I am happy to pledge to be at whatever of these forums, whatever community consultation I can possibly be at. Um, I'm, I'm not sure I've seen as many councillors from around here at Coffee with a Councillor sessions, Cessnock and Curry drop-in sessions at, um, the Woolworths Plaza. The, I, I've been to these sessions. I even attended the East Cessnock Bowling Club, the unofficial public meeting, I think it was, was referred to as.
Gallery.
That would be, that would be correct, Mr Mayor, and out of. Yes, Jack.
Councillor Hawkins, we're not debating the gallery.
Now, Mr Mayor, and look, and out of respect for that forum, um, I, I didn't take the stage. I figured the, the attention belonged on the information that the people had to provide. And, um, I, I think tonight we've even heard cloak and dagger was a term that was used, pull the pin was a term that was used. These are things that are getting the community upset and misinformed. Um, I, the Cessnock meeting that I attended, the, the, the forum, we're even told we need to delay this until the next council election. When you vote for me, I'll stop it. Now, talk about misinformation. A council election is not going to change fifteen years' worth of planning. Um, so, it doesn't matter what the forum is, they're available for misinformation if somebody wants to sprout that, that kind of information.
Come, 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 water, councillor.
It, it was a record.
Councillor, the gentleman at the back in the black shirt, this is your one and only warning. Another outburst and I will ask you to be removed. Councillor Hawkins has the call.
But, Mr Mayor, the, the meeting was recorded, so you can go and check that, that I'm not making this up. This, this isn't the sort of thing that I would lightly raise. But these forums, they're a wonderful opportunity for people to get things off their chest and, and like I said, I support them and I'll be going along to whatever I can, regardless of whether the amendment or the motion gets, gets up. Um, Mr Mayor, I would point out some flaws with the original motion, that it only talks about three separate weekends. And I think that's not, um, a practical and fair on weekend workers. We're in a hospitality industry where people work primarily weekend work. So the, the original motion is not as accessible as it, it possibly could be. Whereas the amendment allows multiple meetings, uh, it allows that flexibility for the consultants. So that if issues do arise and people are saying, I'd like to register for one of these meetings, but I can't get there because I work Saturday nights, this is available to people. Th- this is all about getting more information out there. And, and I couldn't be more solid in my commitment to engagement with the community. Uh, every forum, I've hung around at the end till I was almost the last person to leave at most of them. And I'm happy to do that tonight. Anyone who wants to talk about it, I'm more than happy to make myself available. There's a phone number that's publicly available. There's emails, admittedly. I'm not an email person, but I'm happy to return phone calls. I'm happy to meet people. These forums are going to be a wonderful thing, but I don't believe the original motion with its intent is going to be as effective as the, the amendment. And I, I believe that the engagement team will come back with information. We don't even have the report back yet to know what we're consulting on and what the best way to present that is going to be. So I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. And I'm happy for the amendment to be put.
Councillor Judd.
Sorry, I just got a quick question. Most of our pop-up sessions and information sessions, have they not been mostly through nine to five, Monday to Friday?
Um, from, from, speaking from memory, the, the library session was after, after hours. The, um, coffee with a councillor was late afternoon and, and the pop-up sessions.
I think it was about three o'clock, right, when school pickup was and stuff like that. Yeah. So this is an opportunity for those people that work nine to five outside of the local LGA that might not get there with it being on a, on a weekend. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now deal with, uh, the amendment. Uh, we'll put, uh, so dealing first with the amendment from councillor Moore's. Uh, those in favour of councillor Moore's amendment, uh, councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval. Those against councillors, uh, Watten, Olsen and Judd. The amendment now becomes the motion. Uh, we'll now deal with the motion. Uh, so all those in supporting the motion, which is the amendment that was moved by councillor Moore's. Those in favour, councillors Jackson, uh, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval. Those against councillors Watten, Olsen and Judd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, we'll now move on to, uh, consideration and adoption of all reports by Englobo. Uh, councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Having read and considered the reports in the agenda relating to item CC six, um, the Australian Local Government Association General Assembly, CC seven, investment report, December twenty twenty-three, CC eight, excuse me, investment report, January twenty twenty-four, and CC ten, uh, resolutions tracking report, um, that council adopt the recommendations as printed for those items.
So moved councillor Dunn, seconded councillor Burke. Uh, all those in favour, unanimous. Uh, moving on to, uh, item NI one, twenty twenty-four, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, speaking councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say how disappointed I am with this accusation. I've been threatened, nearly assaulted, called a conspiracy theorist by, by you, Mayor, in the media, written in council paperwork as a climate denier and been accused of being a racist in the Newcastle Herald. Been told that they poisoned the wrong Olsen when my dog died, meant to get Ian, but they got your dog instead. This is from a current councillor and what happens? Nothing. Please, people are watching and they have had enough. I'm keeping everything because this is getting ridiculous. This is bullying.
Councillor Olsen.
Yeah.
In, in addressing the notice of intention.
Yes, uh, the confidential session, you want to put these two reports into the confidential session. I've, uh, a question, um, have the rules been changed that we have to put councillors' names on here now?
Um, thank you, Mr Saval. Um, councillor Olsen, a, um, some advice was received from the officer of government approximately eight months ago, I believe, that provided some advice as to what could and couldn't be put in to the reports that go to the public, um, session and, um, the titles of the reports are in accordance with that advice.
So they, so previously to the eight, eight months ago, they should have, the names should have been on there then? Is that what you're saying? They should have always been on there?
Thank you, councillor Olsen. I believe this question was answered, um, at the time when the first report went out. Um, and I believe a memo went out in relation to the advice that was, was received. And certainly that was our advice that these, um, reports could have, uh, more information on them in relation to letting the public know what's going on.
What memo were you talking about? What memo? What memo?
The last time we dealt with a code of conduct matter, you asked the same question then.
The question was, what the, why are these names drawn here? There's been no memo sent about why we've added names onto these. I asked the question was why have the rules changed that the names have to be added on here now or not? And you said eight months ago, you were notified by the officer of government that you should put the names on there. So it was never against the rules to have the names on there. Is that correct?
Thank you, councillor Olsen. I believe that's the understanding and that's certainly what I was trying to convey.
Okay, thank you. Now, my next question is on these, this, this report I'm being investigated for. Did any, because I spoke about a DA, did any staff member go and have a look and see if I was right or wrong?
We're, we're not here to debate the, um, report. You'll have an opportunity to address, uh.
But I won't be able to ask anyone that question.
In this, uh.
I won't be able to ask anyone that question. Maybe the general manager can answer. He sent anyone out to look before they investigated me.
Uh, we're not here to debate the.
I'm not debating. I'm asking a question.
Well, this is, this item in front of us is about the, about a procedural motion to deal with the matters in confidential session.
It's not a procedural motion.
It's not about the contents of, of the report. It's a notice of intention to deal.
Not a procedural motion. You got that wrong. It, I'm asking a question. Because my, this recommendation is to censure me, did anyone go and have a look to see if I told the truth or I lied? And if no one went looked, but I'm going to be censured and I haven't told a lie, that's all I want to know. You can't answer it?
Uh, I don't believe that's a matter for the staff. I, I believe that's a, a matter that, uh, should be dealt with through the independent investigation. Uh, and if you had any questions about the independent investigator's report, uh, you should have, uh, submitted them in advance when you received the report.
Um, can I ask the general manager, before he sent it away, did he think to go and look?
The general manager does not investigate code of conduct matters.
You are wrong.
The, the, the matter was investigated by an independent investigator and your questions should go.
You are wrong. The general manager is, gets, receives the report, the claim of my misconduct. And the general manager has to rule then whether it is misconduct and send it away to the investigator. The general manager should be the one that goes out and has a look to see if I told a lie. But he didn't. So no one's gone out and had a look. It's just they, they don't want to crucify me. This is why I think these things should be in public, uh, in the public forum, not hidden behind closed doors. Because I get made out to be a bad person and these people sitting out here have no idea what I've done. And I can't tell them until after September.
We'll now deal with the, uh, item. All those, uh, in favour, uh, is councillors Jackson, uh, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval. Those against councillors Watten, Olsen and Judd, uh, I'll declare it carried. Uh, now moving on to report MM one, uh, twenty twenty-four, I'll move that way. Uh, just make a brief comment, uh, in regards to the, the campaign being run by local government New South Wales, uh, which is an organisation representing councils all across the, the, the state. Uh, they're running a campaign into the New South Wales government to try and address, uh, cost shifting that's happened to councils, uh, over an extended period of time. Uh, and I think we should be supporting them in that campaign and, uh, trying to, uh, allow, stop some of that cost shifting, uh, that occurs and then putting the costs then on to ratepayers. So I'll move that. Councillor Olsen.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's a Labour government that's doing this to us. Um, and it's interesting that the, um, federal government is doing it as well by, uh, making a commitment before the election, uh, eighteen months ago, whatever it was, two years ago, to increase or guarantee the FAG grants, the Fags, and, um, and they haven't done it yet. So it's interesting that the Labour Party make promises, make commitments and make these statements, but then they don't follow it through. And now our councils are in this position. You know, a lot of, a lot of the cost shifting come across from, um, our Labour Party, like when we first got the, uh, the, the tax levy, levy on waste. It come by, um, the, the great Bob Carr, who sent this state broke. And, um, and then come along and ta- started taking money and that's why it costs so much to put waste into the ground. It's now the, the fed- federal government and state government are screwing us over all the time to make us look bad and shifting everything over to us. Um, I don't know how we're going to go, how it's going to look when the, um, our Labour council has a go at a Labour state minister. But, um, we can ask, we can keep, keep begging for it. But, um, they don't seem to be wanting to worry about things like that. Our federal government's more worried about spending eleven billion dollars on ships. Um, and not worrying about our hospitals or our other infrastructure. Our state government seems to be more worried about what's happening in Sydney and not worried if it happens out, outside. They just keep making us, put in the infrastructure after they say we've got to put another twenty or thirty thousand houses in Cessnock. It's a great system we have. We're our free tier of government and we're classed as government, yet I feel that we are not a government. We're only local council. Um, we don't make any rules. We just get kicked in the guts by our peo- people above us.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Saval. Just want to ask a question with regards to this. A while ago I attended a meeting with, um, at the anti-room. It was with Dan Ripocoli, Merrill Swanson, Clayton Bar, I think it was an apology. Is their communication still ongoing? Are these meetings still going to occur? And if so, are they on board with supporting this?
Uh, I'm sure that we could, uh, request that they, uh, have another meeting with us, um, at, at some point. But, um, uh, I haven't raised this matter with any of them. Uh, it's something that I've put forward to council to then put forward to them. As you'll see in the motion, it does reference, uh, the New South Wales government, which, uh, is why I've also included sending it to Clayton Bar.
Okay, so there has been communication occurred before looking to write, it's like this is what we need to do. Can you please write to us so we can get this, you know, moving forward? Is that correct?
There's been communication to us as a council from local government, New South Wales, who are our peak advocacy body, uh, that are running a campaign on this issue across the state. And they're asking all councils to put motions up like this, uh, in regards to lobbying the government to address cost shifting on, on councils.
Yeah, it's really concerning and, you know, going back to the, the training we all received as, as new councillors and even the incoming couns- councillors coming through. I forget her name. She had an accent, but she mentioned that there was a real agenda, really. This is what was mentioned, the training to abolish council and I just hope this is not all part of this. We need our councils and we need strong representation at that level as well. So I do hope for a good outcome with this. Thank you.
Okay, in, um, closing then, in, in reply, um, I'll just address some of the comments made. Um, councillor Olsen may not have been able to, to read the, the motion correctly or may potentially be his blind hatred for the Labour Party, but the motion clearly talks about the, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two financial year, uh, which this cost shifting report relates to, uh, which, as he would know, the Labour Party was not in government at a state level. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour of the motion. Uh, not twofly, no, uh, councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Olsen and Saval. Those against councillor Judd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving to report MM two, uh, minutes of the community engagement committee, uh, I'll move that way. They've been circulated. No debate. I'll put the item. All those in favour. Oh, councillor.
Councillor Judd. That was really quick. I was expecting a little bit more. Um, I just want to know, like, Australia Day is held the same day every year, yeah? So it's the twenty sixth, twenty sixth of August. Oh, January. Ha, what am I going August for? I don't know. Um, anyway. So my question is, is there a way to move the community engagement, um, committee that obviously does the, um, picks who's going to get the awards? So we can actually get it in December?
So the community engagement, uh, committee this year was held on the twenty-first of November, uh, in regards to that. Uh, it's been a longstanding practice of the, uh, committee that the report, uh, be held over until the, the February meeting in order to, uh, not make it public before the, uh, before the awards, uh, are presented. Uh, it's all councillors that want to be involved in that meeting, uh, invited to attend. I believe you're a member of that committee but weren't, weren't able to attend that, that, uh, meeting. So, uh, all, all councillors can attend and so, uh, this has been the way it's happened, uh, every year since my time on, on council, which stems back this term and last term.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. That makes total sense now. Thank you.
Councillor Olsen.
You, you know, it never used to be that way. We used to vote on it in December. And, uh, I don't know why it's got to go through till after it's happened. Um, I, I, if you're saying that councillors are going to release confidential information before the awards day, well then who are you accusing? Who are you accusing of, who are you accusing of sharing this information? Because I've never released any confidential information in my time in council. If you're going to make smart remarks, come out and prove it. Prove it. There has never been an accusation, maybe, of releasing confidential information to the public. Never, in twenty-four years of council. So I don't understand why we have to wait to now when we've got plenty of time to put it through. I've said this every other year, every other year. It, it, it should be done and dusted and signed off before we go there because if you come in here and you've got a majority of councillors.
Because if you come in here and you've got a majority of councillor vote against that report, you're going to look stupid.
Councillor Moors?
Thank you, man. Uh, I was on that committee and also, uh, everybody, every councillor is able to come to that meeting as well and, and have their, their say. So that's the way it has been done, uh, for the last three years I've been on council. Uh, so, and I understand it, it was, it was a very good day. I was there. But you cannot obviously let the people slip and know who's got what prior to the Australia Day. That's the idea of the day and the excitement of the people who got up there. Like, you know, there's very, people that very, very deserved the awards, that did extra things that you, you don't even know about. You've never heard until you've heard the story. And it was a very packed. I've never seen so many people in that building for that Australia Day. That's the biggest I've ever seen. And it was a very, very good outturn. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr Savell. If I'm hearing councillor Olsen correctly, his concern is more about the fact that we are voting on this after the fact. Is that, is that your primary concern? Yeah. So my question then is, um, through you, Mr Mayor, is there any reason why this cannot come back in December under confidential enclosure? So we vote on it and it becomes official and it's not on the public record?
Uh, I, I'm not aware of any, um, reasoning on, on that, other than that has been the practice of the committee to, to operate in that, that way. So it may reflect the terms of reference.
Right. Are we able to add a dot point that we look into that?
I'm happy to take the question on notice and get.
Right. Because if that solves the problem, I'd be more than happy to see it come back in a December meeting under confidential, if it means we can have it signed off before the fact. Thank you.
Okay, we'll put the item. All those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to MM3, uh, 2024. Uh, I'll move that way. Councillor Jurd?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On page 44 of the agenda states the committee endorsed the mayor to finalise all documentation in relation to the general manager's performance agreement in consultation with the general manager. I'm not a member of this committee. Who is again? Just remind me.
Who is the committee? The committee is, uh, myself, councillor Dunn, councillor Grine, uh, councillor, um, uh, Painter and councillor Olsen.
Thank you very much. Um, I asked to get a copy of the documents from this meeting and the response I received was, you would not get a, you would have not received the agenda as you're not a member of the committee. I've asked if I can still get a copy with no response. This is the biggest decision of council, who the general manager is, as their role is to direct and control the affairs of council in accordance with the lo- the Local Government Act, to ensure the financial sustainability of council, to develop and endorse a community strategic plan, delivery plan and policies of council, i.e. how many roads we fix and which ones, where we put a park and what the park should look like, for example. To determine and adopt a rating and revenue policy and operational plans that support the optimal allocation of the, of council's resources. You know the value for your dollar and making every dollar count. General manager also determines the senior staff positions within council. My role as a councillor states that I'm to be an active and contributing member of the governing body to make considered and well-informed decisions to participate in the development of integrated planning and reporting framework. The role of the mayor is to be the leader of the council and a leader in the local community to expertise in cases of necessity, the policy-making functions of the governing body of the council between meetings, to advise, consult with and provide strategic direction to the general manager in relation to the implementation of strategic plans and policies of the council. But the Local Government Act also says in consultation with councillors to lead performance appraisals of the general manager. So I ask why is this merril minute the committee endorses the mayor to finalise all documentation in relation to the general manager's performance agreement in consultation with the general manager? When the Local Government Act 1993 says in consultation with councillors to lead performance appraisals of the general manager?
Uh, councillor Jurd, all councillors are invited to attend these, these meetings. It goes out on, um,
Yes, but not everyone can get their due to work commitments.
Any councillors can, can attend and, and be part as, as others do that aren't a member of the committee. I think I forgot to mention councillor Burke's a member of the committee. Um, as you'll note in the minutes, councillor Sander was there, but he's not a, a member. Um, in addressing your question in regards to why is it delegated to me to finalise? Because the document that was agreed by the committee, uh, has to have a signature on it and it has to have a signature in, in regards to, uh, agreements. You can't set the, the terms say that the, the KPIs are set in consultation with the general manager as well. Uh, so that part was managed at the, the committee. Uh, there needed to be some tweaks to the, the document from our, our consultant. And then someone has to sign it with the general manager. Uh, and that's why it is delegated to me as the mayor, who, as you outlined under the thing, uh, I lead the.
So tweaks could happen where something's changed and then you're the only one that sees that document and signs it. Is that what you just said?
No, the, the document was agreed to by the, the committee.
But tweaks can happen and then someone has to sign it. What does that mean?
The, the document was agreed to by the committee, uh, through the consultant who was making the notes of the report. Uh, it is then, uh, gets, the report gets finalized and printed to be able to, to hand back to myself and the general manager to check that all of that information is correct, uh, as per.
So tweaking.
The agreed. So it then gets, uh, signed. Someone has to sign the document and that is why it's delegated to me as the mayor.
Okay. I just want to make note that not everybody can attend these meetings due to work commitments. This isn't a full-time job being a councillor. We're not paid enough to miss work to come to some of these meetings. So when I've requested to get a copy so I can have a read of it later and I can't get a copy, that's quite concerning to me. Thank you.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mr Savell. Um, just to advise for councillor Jurd, I just put up my emails. I don't know if you've got yours in front of you or on your phone or something like that. Um, I received an email for reference on the 31st of January from the executive assistant of the mayor, which included the notice of the meeting and then also the agenda attached underneath, just in regards. I'm not sure about the KPI document. I, yeah, I can forward it to you as well, but maybe that's something to raise with the mayor's office. If you're having, if it's not being sent or coming through to you, like on your email. If you're having trouble getting these notifications, it's a pretty important notification to get through for like when the meeting's on. Because that perhaps you can, um, discuss with one of the other councillors about attending in your stead or just to report back to you on the meeting. So I think it's important that you are able to get these emails. So if you've got an issue where you don't have that one, so it's the 31st of January, you might be able to find in your emails. And if it's not there, I'd maybe follow up with the IT department just to make sure because your claim that you were denied a copy of the agenda. Yeah. No, well, it's, it's written even, even in this email from, yeah, and in this email it states that all, all councils are welcome to attend and that the documents provided for them. So just in conflict there.
Okay. Councillor Olsen has the floor.
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions, Mayor, first. Um, why does this come back as a merril minute?
The, um, these meetings always come back by merril minute because they're coordinated through, uh, my office.
So it's a, it's a committee of council though. So the next question is, was the documentation at the meeting on, put forward that was for the, uh, general manager's performance agreement? Was that there?
The K, so we were addressing the, uh, key performance indicators for the next period. Uh, and that document was available at the meeting, yes.
It was what?
It was available at the meeting.
At the meeting?
Yep.
It wasn't given to any councillors prior to the meeting?
Uh, it would have been given to the committee members, I believe, prior to the meeting, of which councillor Olsen, you are a committee member. Uh, I know you were otherwise engaged doing Facebook Lives, attacking council.
Point of order, man. Point of order, man. That's out of order. That's out of order. And I think you deserve, I deserve an apology.
Councillor Olsen, all of these questions that you're asking could be addressed at the committee, of which you are a committee member of. I'm not going to be lectured by you around processes or, or.
I'm not lecturing you, man.
What's going on in, in a committee that, that you cannot be bothered to turn up to. You cannot apologise.
Point of order. Point of order, man. That's out of order.
Councillor Olsen, we'll now go back. You have the floor. You have, you have the floor, councillor.
You've lost control of the meeting. You've lost control of the meeting already.
Well, you, you have the floor, councillor Olsen.
Now, I, I, yes, I wasn't there, but like when I did first originally see the meeting, I said, oh yeah, they're always at two o'clock. So I wrote it on my calendar, two o'clock. It wasn't at two o'clock. It was at nine thirty in the morning, I think. I don't know. I just, I, I were always been at two o'clock in the afternoon. But anyway, I wasn't there, so I wasn't there. Wouldn't have made any difference to the vote. It wouldn't have made no difference to the vote because the vote was unanimous and I'm only one. So the vote would have stayed the same and it was still to give you the power to sign off on this document, documentation that not all councillors get to see. Now, there's only one person this, this council employs and that's the general manager. And there's only one person we can sack as the general manager. So we should all see the KPIs. We all should see this performance agreement before it's signed off by you. It should be agreed by this council as a whole. Because what we can do now is the general manager and the mayor will go and sit in the office and the mayor will say to the general manager, can you do that? Oh, no, I can't this year, so we don't put that in. We'll take that out. That's possible. Anything's possible when it's left to two people. Two people, the one person that you brought in after four people were selected to be interviewed, no application from the general manager and he turns up for an interview.
Councillor Olsen, you're straying very far away from what we're debating.
We're talking about.
The minutes of the committee. This is about the minutes of the organisational and general managers' review committee held on the 8th of February. Can you please return to dealing with the motion in front of us?
And I am scared. I am scared of what can happen behind closed doors. What can happen behind closed doors when a Labour mayor gets in with the general manager that he brought into this council? He brought into this council, so he's surely going to be wanting to look after him so that he looks after you. And so you are.
Councillor Olsen, you're straying and bordering on, uh, I, I believe disorderly conduct.
How, how's that, man? How?
You're, you're, you're under, you're, you're making, uh, uh, insults, unfavourable personal remarks or imput- improper motives about council officials, which is listed in the code of meeting practice. So I will ask you to, I will ask you to return to the motion in front of us. I've asked you to return to the motion in front of us.
And the motion in front of you, I am scared of what's going to happen on this resolution number one, when the mayor and the general manager sign off on our KPIs for a general manager, that this whole council hasn't seen the KPIs. Even if you're on the committee and you don't turn up, you don't see them. And the other councillors sitting here are going to give you the power without seeing them. It's like voting for that pathway. We don't know what it's going to cost. We don't know what this is going to cost by you signing off it without anyone else, anyone else knowing what's in it.
Councillor Burke?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, um, support the merril minute. Uh, unfortunately, um, I was an apology at the, uh, for that meeting. Uh, I was at work. No Facebook Live, but I was at work. Um, I just, I guess, I put the faith in the committee because that's what committees of council are for.
Yeah, we have a, a point of order. A point of order, councillor Olsen.
Was everyone watching my Facebook page instead of the general manager's review?
Not, not a point of order.
So, uh, I don't, not quite sure how it is funny, but, um, i- if, if, if councillor Olsen has concerns around this committee, get to the meeting. Um, I wasn't at the meeting, so I didn't get to see the KPIs. Uh, though I know that the committee are there, they have, um, rules to abide by. Um, I could have put questions before the meeting. I could have asked questions after the meeting. Uh, because I'm a member of that committee, just like councillor Olsen is. Um, I think that we need to, um, have the process in place and to say that things could be changed between the mayor and the general manager, uh, isn't right. Um, because, and that's what puts fear in our local community. Because if there's things that have been changed, don't you think that some of the committee will go, hang on a second, that's not what we talked about? Because I certainly would and I have. I've clarified things. Point is, get to the meeting if you want to have your input.
Councillor Hill, you've already spoken, so, um, it's not a question. No. Uh, we'll now, uh, put the item. All those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell. Those against councillor Olsen, councillor Jurd. I'll declare it carried. Are there any motions of urgency? Councillor Jurd?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I put forward this motion of urgency as it, as this matter, uh, oh, sorry, trying to get it out fast. I put this motion of urgency as this matter, I have been trying to sort with the works director and I find out today that the project will be starting before the next council meeting. One, that council does not proceed with the installation of the pedestrian ref- refuge at Allendale Road, Cessnock, until a meeting is held on site with the following invited: residents of the area, staff involved with the project, mayor and councillors. Two, after the meeting, a report come back to council for approval. This is a major safety issue for the placement of the pedestrian refuge, not only for the residents affected daily trying to access their properties, but for the people and children trying to cross the road.
Um, can, so you, this was Allendale Road?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, if I can just.
Because I, I think work's about to start real fast. I've been trying to sort it out with the works director.
The validity of the motion. Um, you outlined why you believe it's urgent, which is, um, in regards to the, you believe works are starting before the next meeting.
Yes.
Um, but if I'm just after the director in regards to the, the validity of the motion around council's ability to influence this, because my understanding is that road is a state road and Transport New South, for New South Wales, uh, are the ones that, uh, approve the, the stuff there. So, uh, if I could go to the director of works?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, and thank you councillor Jurd. It is a state road. Allendale Road is part of, uh, Main Road 220, uh, which is under the, um, under the control of Transport for New South Wales. Transport for New South Wales have been consulted and, uh, have been collaborated with in developing the pedestrian refuges along One Country Drive. So the, uh, pedestrian crossing in question at Allendale Road, uh, originally the, uh, design was for it to be further north and transport advised that it should be moved away from the corner or the bend in the road based on site distance and that a better location accommodating access for both the bus stops, uh, is preferred. And it went out on public display. It's been out on public display, uh, on council's website and comments, uh, have been.
I might just hold up there because I, I don't want to get into a debate about the, the validity of the, like about the, the merits of the motion. I just want to know, is it a, a lawful motion that council can influence Transport for New South Wales? Um, or is it something that we can't? Because then it's whether we can accept it or not.
I just want to say, this is the first time through our conversation that you've mentioned it's a state road. Yeah, I wasn't sure. It was, I didn't know it was a state road.
Allendale Road has always been a state road, as far as I recall.
So, um, I'll, I'll ex, and so if I can just clarify the, the, the works, there are works planned between now and the next meeting in that area that you.
Yes, there is. Works is, is.
I can, can accept the, the motion as a motion of urgency. Um, if from my thing, it will then be go to, um, councillors about whether they want to accept it and, and debate the merits of the motion later in the meeting. Um, but it's, um, yeah, I, I can accept it as meeting the criteria from my end, from a motion of urgency. And now it goes to a vote by the councillors. Um, so yeah, it'll now go to a vote of councillors about.
Yeah, do you, yeah, sorry. I did say it quite quickly. Um, so I put forward this motion of urgent, oh, hang on, not. Yeah, do you, yeah, sorry, I did say it quite quickly. Um, so I put forward this motion of urgent, oh, hang on, not that part. So number one, that council does not proceed with the installation of the pedestrian refuge at Allendale Road, Cessnock, until a meeting is held on site with the following invited: residents of the area, staff involved with the project. Oh, sorry. I'm really sorry. Sometimes, so, yeah, yeah, I sometimes I get a bit nervous and I, I do spit it out really fast. Um, do you want me to say it for you councillor Hawkins? Yep. Um, residents of the area, staff involved with the project, mayor and councillors. And two, after the meeting, a report come back to council for approval. Uh, the reason I bring it up is it may, like, I've had a few residents re- reach out to me about the safety concerns about them being able to get it out there, driveway, parking and people.
So we, we won't, we're not debating the merits of it now. Um, so the motion is that council does not proceed, uh, with the, the works, uh, on the pedestrian crossing, uh, subject. Yeah. Yep.
We're simply voting now on whether this will be dis- discussed at the end of the meeting. This isn't in favour or against the motion?
That is correct. Yeah, yeah.
The procedure that we'd be dealt with tonight.
This is the procedure about whether we deal with it, um, later in the meeting or whether we don't, um, accept it or not. Um, and so, uh, is the, the motion seconded? Was it seconded councillor Watten? Yep. Okay. Um, we'll just wait till it's up on the screen completely to, um, before we vote. Okay, yep. Comfortable with that one. Yep. Okay, we'll now, uh, vote on, uh, whether we deal with this matter later in the meeting. So voting that way. It's, uh, councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, but, so this isn't regards to, you're not supporting whether, yeah, unanimous. Yep. Yes, yep. Uh, still on, uh, motions of urgency councillor Olson.
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion of urgency. I said that the mayor bring a report back to the next council meeting on the twentieth of March with the following information. Who gave you the authority to sign council up to the Hundred County Community Alliance? Why weren't councillors and the community informed of this decision? What impact this will have on the operation of council, i.e. costs, staff, et cetera? Four, the benefits of the, to the community. And five, the motivation of another body of groups when we already have three levels of government. I think this is urgent because you signed us up for this on the eighth of November and I have never heard anything about it until I got an email asking me to be a volunteer. So I think we need to know why you signed us up and who give you the authority ASAP and so what, what it all means to our council.
Uh, one, um, it's, it's not a, a motion of urgency. It's something that could be put through at any time as a motion. Uh, so it doesn't meet the criteria. And two, council, uh, I don't believe you signed up to Hundred Community Alliance. I'm not sure where you've got that information, but, uh, I don't believe it's correct.
It's all in there. Your, your picture's in there, speaking and saying you were-
I, I've spoken at events held by them, where I was invited as the mayor, but we, we're not signed up to it.
Do you want me to confirm what I'm saying or do you want to say I'm a liar?
Councillor Olson, I, I, I've ruled-
Liar? And I've got proof here that you so, you signed it up.
Councillor Olson, it's not a, a point of order. Councillor, councillor Olson, we're dealing with whether your, um, motion meets the criteria of an urgency motion. And I, I have ruled to say, no, it does not meet the criteria of an emergency, an urgency motion. Councillor, councillor Olson.
Who that you will sign this up?
Moved on, uh, to, uh, report P E one twenty twenty four. Uh, so I'm moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine, uh, speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Sorry, very quick moving on there to the next item. Um, I'm, I'm very happy to, to endorse this, uh, resolution as stated in regards to the planning agreement, um, to be put out on public exhibition for this site up here in, in Lang Street. This, excuse me, this outcome for both council and the community, I think, is, is beneficial. The, um, the agreement, uh, includes information about the way in which the, um, applicant will develop, uh, a new laneway to, um, provide access to what will hopefully be their new, um, their new business complex, uh, if the development is finally approved down the line by the, uh, regional planning panel. Um, and I think that this, the progression of this application in itself in this planning agreement is, reflects really positively on the benef- benefits of the Curry CBD master plan that's been in action. You can see the amount of work that, uh, council itself is putting in up in Rotary Park and up in the main street. Um, and in talking with the businesses councillor Grine and councillor Painter and myself, who have been up there popping our heads into different businesses, I'm starting to, to hear a bit of a sentiment from the businesses in regards to how they are eager to also contribute to the investment and the upgrade of the CBD after seeing the, um, the action and direction put forward by council. Um, and I also just would like to, to touch on that with the, um, the benefit that this planning agreement will, um, continue to upgrade that CBD plan where I think council has continued to do a great job consulting with the businesses. Earlier, we heard from someone who made some comments about, you know, their thoughts of how we were dealing with that. Um, but as councillor Grine stated, um, us Ward D councillors have been keeping up to date and up in contact with the businesses in the CBD um, and discussing with staff on the progress of the project. And specifically, the project has, um, taken various steps to improve the, um, operation of businesses during works, which has then obviously led to a smaller delay in the delivery of the project. But they're the kind of additional, additional works and communications that our staff and crews and the project, uh, and the contractor undertaking the project is putting in. Uh, and I'd just like to thank, uh, council and the community at large for, um, pushing forward with these upgrades and improving Curry.
Councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, going off this report, I'm just wondering, maybe I've missed it. What's the width of the laneway? Because it's, to me, I see only square metre inches.
Director, do you wanna tell you that or? Do you want? It's referring to the manager of strategy planning.
Through you, Mr Mayor, the, the width, um, of the new way, lane way, I don't know. It would have to comply with our engineering guidelines and our engineering requirements. I can take that question on notice and I can give the answer after the meeting.
Thank you very much. That would be appreciated. Um, so the entrance exit onto Barton Street, uh, do you have a traffic study plan? I just don't want what happened with McDonald's on Snape Street to happen here, where this gets approved and then the traffic plan comes back and says we're taking, um, parking from the front and, and if the entrance is safe, et cetera. Would, would you be able to send that through too or? Yep, okay. Um, because I think most would agree, this would be great for Curry, um, but I just wanna make sure that the design is a smart decision. I wanna, I, I used to work on this street right near that corner and I just know how dangerous it is. So I wanna make sure that we're taking this all into consideration and maybe making it a left out of the lane ray or wh- whatever it's gonna be safer. So, thank you.
Councillor Grine.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. I, um, I just wanted to say, uh, how good's Curry looking? Um, the main street and the works that have been going on there. And yes, us Ward D councillors do work together regardless of political whatever, it's all crap. But anyway, um, I just wanted to say that this is not, and I repeat, this is not about us giving the approval for the Woolworths development. This is about a laneway. That, um, so I just wanted the community to, to know that this is going to the planning panel for determination and this has to go through for that determination to happen. Um, so I, I support this hundred percent and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing Barton Street next on the list to be repaired. So thank you very much.
No further debates. We'll now put the item, all those in favour. Unanimous. Uh, report C, C one twenty twenty four, uh, moving that way councillor Hill, uh, with an additional, uh, points in the- Yep.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Has the dot point been provided or will I need to read that out?
Yep, um, the additional point.
Uh, yep, excellent. Uh, I can read that out just to, for the benefit of the crowd. Uh, additional point to be added to the resolution, um, stating that we request the mayor and general manager to advocate to the honourable Steve Camper, Minister for Lands and Property and Mr Clayton Bar, Member for Cessnock, to transfer the land to council at nil cost.
So moving that way, seconded councillor Sander. No debates. Put the, uh, no debate. Councillor Dunn.
Just one question. Um, with regard to the tender for the bun wall, we've already accepted the tender. We, we put the tender out last year, um, to build the bun wall. How is it we are now coming to a position where we are looking at compulsory, compulsorily acquiring land we don't own? I would have thought all of that would have had, would have happened before we even considered a tender to build it.
I'll answer this question as best I can. Um, in the design of the bun wall, um, the original design was proposed to remain within the land that we originally acquired. Um, through that process, they've identified that, um, we are not able to build the bun wall safely without it, uh, basically seeking to acquire some extra land.
Okay. No further debates. Put the, uh, item, all those in favour. Unanimous. Uh, C C two twenty twenty four, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Speaking councillor Hill.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, so I'm just getting a little mixed up between my two, uh, financial statements documents. Is this the one with an amendment that I provided or is that the Q R B S?
No, this is, uh, for the financial statement.
Not a problem. Excellent. I just didn't wanna, I didn't wanna break out into discussion before moving an amendment I had provided. Um, I wanted to speak, uh, briefly in, in support of this, of this report and also highlight a few, a few things that pop out in the report that may perhaps, you know, at a glance, um, cause some individuals to raise concern. Um, the, as stated there in, in the resolution, um, the audit office is continuing to, to push council on our, um, adopted resolution and position that we wouldn't, we will not recognise the R F S service fleet, uh, for auditing purposes, you know, a view that's shared by other, many other councils. And it's disappointing that we have to continue to have this disagreement, uh, with the audit office. Um, because it's affecting, in no way it affects our support of the volunteers, firefighters within the L G A, as stated there in point four. But it's frustrating that, um, that the status is continuing to hold this position for us. And, um, in addition, the, the, uh, number of items that come up that have had an effect on council's budgetary position to, um, to create the, the on paper deficit we have, um, I like to raise that the, relate to a number of things that are not just council spending money way out of our regard. You know, the, the impact that, uh, the orphan waste site renewals costs have had on the, on the budget, as well as pending, um, legal costs and the, uh, the issue of depreciation have had a massive impact, um, on our budget, um, bottom line, as stated in this report. But I think members of the community could agree that there's, we've never seen so much works being undertaken by council in the L G A. You know, here's for so long and one of the reasons I run for council, uh, was, uh, my intention to try to push for additional works and upgrades to roads happening. Uh, the problem is when you upgrade a road before it is its end of life date, we then have to depreciate the cost of that remaining life of the road. So while not only does it cost us to upgrade the road to a better state, we then have to depreciate the cost of the road that was there. Um, which is one of those auditing frustrations that, um, as someone who was not massively, a massive financial nerd when getting onto council, I found quite frustrating to get across and to understand. Um, but all in all, um, with our current cash position that we, that we maintain, uh, and the positive outcomes of this increased, uh, capacity of work delivery, I, um, I'm happy that we are making progress around the L G A.
Councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's so much in this report, it really needs longer than the twenty ninth of this month to do a submission. As I wanna spend more time on it, I know how, I wanna know how we went from naught point six million dollar surplus in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two to now twenty nine point eight million dollar deficit. That's not a little difference. That's over twenty nine million dollars. I just can't see council doing well at all if we keep going down this track. Rates are up four point nine percent. Grants are not always available. Most grants are dollar for dollar, so you have to match it. We only need one more year like this financial year and the cash reserve of seventy three million is almost gone. Even the governor general doesn't take grants and contributions into consideration as they are not a guarantee. Our financial decisions are questionable, to say it politely. I would not think businesses would follow this model of decision making.
Councillor Watten, were you? Yep. Councillor Olson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, concerning figures, some of these figures in here, um, when you look at our debt, debt service cover ratio, you know, we're supposed to be above two and we're, um, what are we, minus point two one. Um, that means we can't, uh, service our debt. Um, we'll, we'll be, we're in trouble if we wanna borrow more money. And it does, and we also, we borrow money internally. I don't know how much we've got outstanding at the moment. I don't know if every other councillor knows this, but when we borrow money internally, we don't class that as a debt. Even though we've gotta pay it back, we might take money out of a section ninety four or something and then we have to pay it back. But we don't class that as debt. We, we just not record it as a debt. So there are more debts than that. There's a lot of figures in here that are very concerning the operating performance. Um, the, the own, own source operating revenue ratio, it's, um, well below where we need to be. Um, at the moment, we've gone, we've been going backwards for the last three years. The, um, there's, it, it's just seems a, a pattern of everything seems to be going backwards. And it, it's not a good way to be. We, like, we're not playing here with monopoly money. We're not making a monopoly game to make money out of. Um, but we're trying, we, we need to make sure that we get a balanced budget, which this should have been finished last year. It, it's not February. It should have been done last year and all finalized. And, and the changes we've found, the three million dollars difference between last year and this year when it come back to council. It's concerning to me that, that some councillors just pushes through and say, that's okay. Um, I, I, I get worried, I get worried that we're going down the wrong path. I get worried that we're heading in the wrong direction. And I get worried that what we are, what we are saying is like, oh, we're doing a lot of work, but there's not a lot of work going on on roads compared to what should be going on. Um, we have a backlog of over two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of roadworks that need to be done. That's to get our roads up to a level three, one being best, five being the worst, to get all our roads up just to be level three satisfactory, not the best satisfactory. That doesn't mean curve and guttering, et cetera, et cetera. It means to get them up to a success, a happy level that people will, will not complain so much. And so if you can get them up to there, we need two hundred and fifty million dollars. So that doesn't say much for a budget of what we got there. And what we are spending now, we're spending more money on footpaths than we've ever spent in years and they don't connect to anything. And people are complaining to me the day, the dangers of them and what we're doing and where we're going with them and what we're trying to achieve with these, these paths. I'm all for putting in cycle ways, but they've gotta join. Um, you can't go from a two point four, five metre path down to a one metre path and keep riding if you're over sixteen. And then it becomes dangerous if you are riding on that path and someone else is walking. So look, you can pat yourselves on the back and think you're doing a great job, but I can, all I see is figures pointing down, down, down. Bad, bad, bad. And, um, I'm concerned, I'm concerned and I'm concerned that some people think- And I'm concerned, I'm concerned and I'm concerned that some people think that monopoly money is just easy to print.
Put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grind, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Saval. Those against councillor Olsen, councillor Judd. I'll declare it carried. Moving on to C three twenty twenty four, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Dunn. Speaking councillor Judd.
I just got a really quick question, Mayor. Did Trinity come to, come to Cessnock? Like, did they come here for a meeting about skate park, go on site, et cetera? Like, it's just seem, seems strange that they've decided. It's just, is it just a conflict of interest with their calendar? Like, did they actually, wait, let me rephrase that. When they, when they took the tender, did they come to town, look at the site and work out the project was too big of a, of a project that would have not worked with their calendar? Is that what happened?
Director.
Thank you, councillor Judd. As outlined in the report, I can't comment on whether the, the tender has came to town. I would assume they would have looked at the site. Certainly the tender was awarded to Trinity when they've reviewed their work programme. As outlined in the report, they've advised us that they are unable to take the works and hence the reason why the general manager and the mayor went then progressed to award to the second tenderer.
No worries. I just, I actually just noticed they were in town, that's all. I just thought it was a bit strange that they weren't going to do it. Ta.
Councillor Olsen.
Yeah, just a question on the financial implications there. It's a, going to cost an extra hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. How much do we have in the budget for this project?
No idea.
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Olsen. I'll take that question on notice.
Yeah, yeah, because that's, that's important information we should be getting because if it's over what we had in the budget, then we've got to find more money from somewhere else. And we should, we need, we need to know this because if it is a hundred and sixty thousand, mightn't be much to some people around this table, but it's a fair bit to me. And I, I would be concerned where we're going to take it off what to do this. So that should be, information should be in our reports. And it's the second time I've asked about financial implications and stuff and I'm not getting any answer.
Put. Councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, I just want to commend the staff for this. This is an important project. Where we continually say there's nothing for our kids to do in this town, yet here we are with a regional level skate park and a contractor pulled out due to scheduling commitments that they were unable to meet. They were unable to meet our funding guidelines. So they've pulled out and the staff were able to re-award the tender. So I think that's a good result and I think that we can, we can criticise all we want, but I think that on this occasion, the staff have done a fantastic job at keeping this project on track. And if I recall, the original issue was they were going to delay the commencement of that. So I'm hopeful that this will actually bring forward the commencement of the project. And the sooner that our kids can be playing on this, the, the better it will be. This is going to be a fantastic facility. I, I cannot say enough how happy I am that this has finally come to fruition. Councillor Bircham, if she's watching at home, we're doing this and we've been arguing for a long, long time. And on this occasion, we've managed to keep it on track. So hopefully sooner rather than later, kids will be on it.
No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Unanimous. Councillors will move to C four twenty twenty four. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. All those in favour.
I thought I had a question here. I just, I just, look. I get, I get disappointed when we get these reviews. What? What are we on? Oh, sorry. I'm on the, I've jumped one. The delivery program. Oh shit. But it's good to have a delivery program that might be on time, but are we getting, are we getting what everyone wants done?
Put the item, all those in favour. Unanimous. Moving C five twenty twenty four, moving that way councillor Hill with a, and a slight amendment to dot point four it is. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, thank you. The amendment to dot point four there to state that council approves the proposed changes to the twenty three, twenty four operating and capital budgets as presented in the quarterly business report, December twenty twenty three, except that the Greata Brangston cycleway project budget be retained at one million dollars.
So seconded councillor Sander. Sorry, councillor Judd.
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. If we're solely reliant on grants, we have gone from last financial year of fifty six million in grants to this projected year of forty three million, which is like what our government has said not to rely on grants as they are not able to always hand them out. They did a lot over the COVID to keep the money in the economy, but now they are recouping that money. This leaves the question, do you think we'll get the grant money to do stage two of Volby Road or even stage two of Maitland Road?
Director.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Judd. We're uncertain about getting funding until such time as the, the funding nominations have been determined. We continue to search for and nominate for funding through the various avenues. And until we are successful, we can't confirm that we are able to proceed with a project that relies on funding.
No worries. I understand that. I ju, I think we might have to organise a meeting maybe to go over Mount, Maitland Road just to see where we are with that one, because that's quite a long time since stage one and stage two, we were pretty much told the grant would be, you know, there straight after. So I'd like to chat to you more about that. Thanks.
Councillor Olsen.
Yeah, just a question if I may on point four there. Did, did we take the million dollars out of the budget? Or were you going to take it out of this one?
The director.
Thank you, Mr Saval. The report, as it was written and presented to the council and the public, initially had the full amount of the available funding in this operational year being removed. Subject to that previous report, we need to leave a million dollars in there so that we can actually do those works out on the Greata Brangston cycleway, hence the need for the amendment to that dot point four.
So that million dollars comes back in, does that make any difference to the deficit?
To the.
Director Finance.
No, that's a couple of items. It makes, makes no difference.
Okay, right. Look, I, I think councillor Judd made a good point there a minute ago about the grants and how they're drying up. We were told and when COVID hit, that we're gonna, the governments, state and federal, poured heaps of money into councils and et cetera, et cetera, to forget infrastructure moving because COVID hit and was destroying the economy. And it was always said that eventually those grants would dry up, the, the amount of the grants would dry up. And it's starting to show now. The, the state and federal governments are all broke because of COVID and they've got to find ways of saving money. And obviously the first person they cut the funding off to is local council, unfortunately. So we've got to be careful what we do over the coming months and years and setting our next budget because if we don't get these grants, as you can see, it was something like thirteen million dollars decrease, we're going to be in deep trouble. And the reason why we are doing so much work now is because we've accumulated over the last few years a backlog of work that we never got done. And it's, but of that, what work we are doing, the majority isn't roads. It's all infrastructure. Where I think the majority of people in this community want roads done before footpaths and before other stuff is getting done. But anyway, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about where this council is heading. I think I'm concerned about basically councils across the state. I think, I think the governments are pushing the agenda of send us broke and then we'll have a super council. That's why we're part of this, having a joint regional council so that they'll take over from us, unfortunately. And you'll lose your local content and, and unfortunately our community will lose out because we are a super council that will look after the major people and like, like our, our state government does now, look after Sydney first and, and the country last. So yeah, it just, I think we've just got to be careful. We've just got to watch what we're doing, where we spend our money and make sure. Whatever we're spending money on, we get the best dollar for it. And then, and to ask these questions I've asked tonight about what it's going to cost us extra on doing a skate park, it's going to affect our budget and it's going to affect other work we do. What it's going to cost to do our pathway, where do we find the money? It's going to affect this budget. It's going to affect next year's budget and it's going to affect future councils. So I think it's a good know where we spend our money and where it's going and where it's going to cost us if we're going to vote for something. You know, we put up a notice of motion, we've got to find, we've got to know where we're going to get the money to be able to do that issue. We just can't go and do it. We just can't say we're going to do it. And that's what this problem is here at the moment with, when staff are coming to us with reports without having where this funding is all coming from and what we're going to have to change. That worries, that concerns me.
No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grind, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Olsen and Saval. Those against councillor Judd. Declare it carried. Moving to C nine twenty twenty four, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander.
I just got a really quick question, Mr Mayor. These disclosures of interest, are they available for the public to see? Like, do they have to go through the Freedom of Information Act?
If the members of the public want to come into the council, they can certainly access the documents.
Awesome. Thank you.
Moving to report WI two, oh, sorry, we'll vote on the item, all those in favour. Unanimous. Now moving to WI two twenty twenty four, minutes of the traffic committee, moving that way councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Painter. No debate. Put the item, all. Councillor Olsen.
The issue we're talking about later, about the Allen Dye Road, did it go through the traffic committee? And why not?
The director.
Through you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Olsen. To that point, it doesn't have to go through a traffic committee, it's on a state road.
But we, other state issues we have through the traffic committee as well, because we have Transport, New South Wales are there. Okay, we'll sneak that one through.
No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Unanimous. Moving to report BN one twenty twenty four, councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You're quick to press the buzzer for me. I move my notice of motion with the motor, motorbikes, that's in my brain, mountain bike trails. So my motion one is that council form a committee to plan and design motorbike trails in the LGA to encourage more tourism to the area and support locals who are involved in the sport. Two, that the committee should consist of at least one councillor, staff members and invite residents who participate in the sport to apply so we can use their expertise and knowledge of the local area. So, oh, hang on, I've got to wait, don't I?
Seconded councillor Olsen.
Yeah, okay. So I put this notice of motion forward because months ago I had residents reach out to me about the bike tracks and what's happening. I know one in particular had said they were going to join the BMX committee through council, but nothing happened and basically gave up on this committee coming to life. The commentary from the general manager about my notice of motion, I take on board that there is a Trails Reference Group informed, formed in twenty twenty two with the purpose to provide advice input into planning and development of trails, including ma, mountain bikes within the LGA with responsibilities including contributing to the development, maintenance, promotion of the trails in the Cessnock LGA. The TRG currently meet every six months with the next scheduled meeting in March twenty twenty four. Now, I sent council an email with that snippet of the commentary and asked if I could get more information on that committee and how would the group that gave up on the council forming the BMX committee would be able to get involved. The response I received was the Trail Reference Group sought expressions of interest from the community in November twenty twenty two. The reference group members have a background in cycling, bushwalking, horse riding, environmental and an Aboriginal elder, to name a few. The committee is currently at full capacity. However, if you'd like to share the details of the interests of people, we could pass that on to the reference group coordinator for consideration when the next ELI is called. So my question really is, does this, this committee that is formed, like the, like the, what, the Trails Reference Group, it doesn't have any councils on it. It, it, does it report back to council meetings? Because I've never heard of it before. So what, I'm not really sure what it does. So what I'm trying to achieve is to get more tourism into our LGA. Our local people know the best tracks and we need to promote it. Does, does this current, this, does this current group already do this? If not, I would like you all to think about this and see if, see it for what it is, a chance to have our little town on the map for more than just the wineries. We have so much potential here and I think we're just not utilising it all.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mr Saval. I, in generally, I'm in support of the sort of motive there from, from councillor Judd in regards to sort of getting councillors as well specifically involved in that committee. I've gotten emails, I think in the past from the, the TRG, the Trails Reference Group, but never looked really much into it. So I sort of knew that it was there, but I didn't really know what it did. So if, if possible, I'd, I'd like to possibly propose an amended motion, which perhaps will hopefully cover sort of the main goals as well that councillor Judd is trying to address there. That the, the council note that the Trails Reference Group has been formed from the Trails Strategy to assess, manage and endorse mountain bike trail proposals within the LGA to ensure alignment with the vision and objectives set within the Trails Strategy. And number two, that any recommendations for current and future mountain bike trails be referred to the Trails Reference Group. And for point three, to request the general manager to work with the Trails Reference Group to amend the terms of reference to allow councillors to attend future meetings. With the intention that hopefully that.
Seconded councillor Burke, so, yeah, speaking on that.
Yes, and so I would, I would hope that that third point in, in particular would help to address councillor Judd's concern about councillors not being able to access that committee. Because I, as I understand it, their terms of reference don't allow councillors to attend or to be a part of the committee. And I think that an amendment to that terms of reference, as quoted, I think in the director's commentary, would perhaps make it a bit more open to at least us councillors who could then raise concerns of members who are not able to be a part of the committee themselves.
Councillor Olsen.
A couple of questions first. How does a councillor get any information about what the Trail Reference Group is doing?
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for the question councillor Olsen. I'll have to take that on notice. The Trails Reference Group is a, a group of community members that, that make quarterly. The, the, the minutes of those meetings, I'm unaware of how they're distributed.
Yeah, because it's, it's a, it's not a committee of councils and councillors aren't allowed to attend. I think that basically just says it's shut up shop and we're not allowed in. The, the, the next thing is, it, it's been formed in twenty twenty two and can we as councillors be told who the members are? And contact details? So if someone wants to talk to them?
Through you, Mr Mayor, and thanks for the question councillor Olsen. I'll take that on notice.
Take that on notice as well. Right. The, the thing why this motion councillor Judd spoke to me about putting this motion forward, we, I was talking about a place in Tasmania called Derby or Derby, whichever way you want to say it. And that they were a small town of great, had nothing happening in it, very small community and looking like going out the back door basically. So they went and started some mountain bike tracks and now you've got to book six months in advance to get there. It's every Monday to Friday, it's basically sold out in accommodation. The bike shops are going nuts down there. You've got to book for meals. It's, it's just so great of a complex for people to be able to go to that they keep going back. Now, we have some of the best mountains around here for mountain bikes as well. And I know I've spoken to a number of people that ride and I don't do it, I'm not, I'm not that mad, I might be mad, but I'm not that mad. And they, they want to see more tracks here, but as councillor Jurd said to me, well, if we get them all here and then can we get that, fill some of the accommodation during the week? I just see that if we don't have an open forum, an open committee, then the council involvement, the councillors involved in this committee, then how can we move forward and support it? We don't know what's happening. We need to be able to go out there and talk to these groups. It's like, the curry mongrels and all them people, they, they ride around the bush in dark and all that sort of stuff. They do crazy stuff and, but they love it out here and we've got so many tracks. I run around the bush and there's so many tracks running around. Cross-country running is fantastic and it brings a lot of community people out. Set Colfield's cross-country now is running with around 100 members, it's fantastic to see them out there in the bush running around. The worst part is seeing all the burnt out cars and all the rubbish. But we have some of the best tracks, we have some of the best mountains. And I think this is why, this is why councillor Jurd has brought it here tonight, because she wants to see more tourism, more sports for every, every person has their sport. Some walk to the bar, some play cricket, some do play soccer, some play rugby league. But everyone has a different sport. We have to try and support them, every support as best we can to keep people active, but this will also help the community in jobs, 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 because you have people here during a week. I seen it in New Zealand when I was over there recently, that this bloke had a house that he converted and put, filled his sheds out and he puts 10 people in there for five days and they come there, he feeds them and he drives them out to different tracks each day and he's making a motza, a motza out of it. But it's created jobs for him and two staffs. It's employed three people. Then people are then going into the pubs at night as well and having a few beers. He drives them in, brings them back. It's all about putting money back in the community and about supporting the community. And these people need somewhere to go. And we are so close to Sydney that we could get weekend warriors up here, we could get everybody up here on a different type of avenue. And this is, we've got to keep looking outside the square. There's other different ways of getting people here other than wine. Not everybody comes, drinks wine. And we need to have other staff so people come and support the area. Okay, we've got a TRG group, I never even knew existed, and now we've got 10 community representatives on that and I don't know who they are. I don't know how anyone can talk to them because we don't know who they are. And if this motion ever come forward, we would have never found out we had a TRG. So, anyway, I just hope that councillors can not vote for the amendment, but vote for the motion as written, because we need this to happen.
Councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll be voting for the amendment because we already have a reference group formed and I find it ironic that we're going to form another committee when councillors don't even attend the current committees that we've got.
With that, we'll put the item. We'll, we'll put the item, all those in favour of the amendment, we're dealing with the amendment first, those in favour of the amendment, councillors Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval, those against, councillors Moores, Painter, Watten, Olsen and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. We'll now move on to the, that now becomes the motion, we'll now put the motion, all those in favour of the motion, in front of us, councillors Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval, those against, councillors Moores, Painter, Watten, Olsen and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. We'll now move to deal with the urgency motion from earlier tonight. So we can go to... If we can bring up the urgency motion. So councillor Jurd, you're moving the urgency motion. Was the, the motion seconded?
Yep.
I think it was seconded.
Motion seconded.
Yeah, seconded.
Seconded by, yeah councillor Olsen.
Bit of a mission to find it.
So, so speaking to councillor Jurd.
Okay. The reason I brought this to attention was because I've been trying to discuss it with the works director and I've been informed that it was going ahead quite early and that it wouldn't have been able to be put as a norm for the next council meeting. So that's the reason why this is a motion of urgency. I've went out and met with the residents on this road. One gentleman is in his late 80s and it's right out the front of his place and he's the only one that drives for his wife. And due to the way that they're going to put this refuge in, he thinks that he'll have to give up his licence and that's going to be very detrimental because if anyone knows here that's got elderly parents and elderly family members, that we don't have a lot of, we have services, don't get me wrong, but it's really hard to get the services to take you to doctor's appointments, et cetera, et cetera. So this is why, one of the reasons. Two, the other reason is we have a pedestrian crossing not far from there that would have been a lot more safer for residents to cross. I don't know why, like, anybody in their right mind would not want to cross the road there at any time of the day. It is massively like crazy busy. The other thing too is it already has limited parking, so this is going to take out a lot of parking. And there's one resident that lives just up from there who I know has daily nurses coming to their, their property to check on, on them because they're chronically ill. So, and they don't have the room for the nurse to park in their, in their, in their driveway. So this is a major issue, so I don't know what else to say. Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, this is a matter of urgency and thank you councillor Jurd for bringing it to us. The issue is what we've got here is we're not the consent authority, so it can't come back to us for approval and it's, it's a state road, so we can't really hold any kind of consultation with the community. So I guess my question is to the director, I guess, what actually can we do to talk to Transport for New South Wales about this?
Through you, through you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Dunn. We have consulted with, with Transport on, on the options that have been put with the refuge as a result of the project Bridges Hill to Nalkabar Shared Path. I believe the project manager has also consulted with the community as, during the public display period. So I'm concerned that we've missed one member of the community by the sounds of it.
Okay.
Councillor Olsen.
Yeah, I, look, I think, I think delaying this won't hurt, it doesn't matter. Transport New South Wales might be the consent authority, but we don't have to do it. Right? First of all, we don't have to do it. Secondly, go over there and have a look at these people's yards that we're going to take away the parking from in front of them. One gentleman to back out of his yard, his back of his car will be on the road before he sees past his fence line. So how does he get out of his yard? Another gentleman owns a caravan and the concrete's going to be right in front of his driveway. How does he get it in and out of his yard? We need to consider these residents and put the residents first before we do this work. Now, I suggested to one of our council staff that we don't cross the road there and we go down around the bend towards Calvary in the direction the path should be going, down towards Nalkabar. And they said, oh no, it's not safe enough down there. Well, it doesn't affect any residents, it's just as far from the corner as what this one intersection will be, so it would be in benefit to put it down there. If we don't ask Transport New South Wales if we can move it and put it somewhere else, how can we? I don't know what staff went and took to the, to them to find out whether we could put it there or not. But then what you've got to also consider, if we, we keep this crossing in that place, as I've said before, they're 2.5 metre wide for a shared pathway. You come across to the other side, to the western side of Allandar Road and the path is about 1.2 metres wide. So where do the pushbikes go? Where do they go? They can't ride along that path. This is a problem we're creating, we're putting in this, this stuff, it doesn't work. The path that goes out to, out to the school is not going to, is totally wrong when you go around the cemetery corner, it's 1.2 metres wide and if you ride a pushbike along there, you cannot see anything coming the other way. So there hasn't been a lot of thought put into that. There's nothing been put into about the residents' concerns and we as councillors have a, have a duty to look after the safety of residents. And I think residents come before anything else and it should always be residents first. So in this case, what will it hurt if we stop, go and have a meeting out there, talk to the residents with all the staff and the people who want to build this and say, come on, let's get some common sense here, let's look after these people. Because you're going to take parking away, we're going to take safety away and we can't ride a pushbike along that side anyway. Never will be able to, never, because it's not wide enough. And as soon as you step off that footpath, you're going to be in traffic. So that is a serious concern and I was talking to a resident there on Monday and two houses down, a fellow fell off his scooter in the driveway because it's up and down, up and down, up and down. And he fell off on, on the footpath in his scooter. Now that's another concern because when he fell, he fell down and rolled into the car park area on the side of the road. If it wasn't, if there was no parking there, then he could have been run over. And now, the whole issue is, what do we want to do? Do we want to cycle away or do we want to put safety over residents first? I, I have a solution, the residents have a solution, councillor Jurd has a solution, let's put the solution to Transport New South Wales and make it better. Because this pathway is not about, it was never started to go around the world, it was started to go from Bridges Hill to the school. Now it's going around the world and I was told by one of our staff that they want to cross it there because the path's got to continue over to Mount View Road. I'm not worried about going on the Mount View Road from there, I want to get it to the school because that's what we got the funding for. But I want to make sure we look after the residents and if we don't support this motion tonight, you're sending a clear message, residents don't care.
Councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I have a few questions, if I may, to the director. Did you mention before that this has already been on exhibition?
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor, thank you for the question councillor Burke. Yes, it has been on public exhibition, so there's been an opportunity for councillors, the community and stakeholders to provide feedback on the location and layout of the design. And you mentioned council being consulted. Do you know, and I hate to put you on the spot with it, but do you know why it's going to be where it is? There was another location that was identified early in the design, which was further north and on the recommendation of Transport, it was moved south for the improvement of site distance and also to accommodate the two bus stops which are on the eastern side and western side of Allandar Road. And given that we're not the consent authority, we've been part of the consultation, what, what do you think we can do? Because I guess the motion up is for us to get involved, get the residents together, get the staff together, but we're actually not doing the work. I'm not quite sure what we can do if you even think we could do anything at all. We're undertaking the work on behalf of Transport and the funding is, is through another body, through DPE. We're committed to actually spend that, that funding. However, during that public display period for that, that pedestrian refuge, we, we did consult with the, the local residents. So I'd be really keen to understand who we've missed in that consultation and we took on board their feedback and presented it back to, to Transport as part of our response. Yeah, thank you and thanks for the explanation because I do, it's hard to swallow when comments are made that if you don't, if you vote whichever way you want to vote, you do or you don't support the residents. Point of may.
He's talking about why he's deciding.
How we're going to vote. You only had to say what you want. I'm going to say what I want. No, it's not, yeah, see this is misinformation in the community straight out, we've heard it from the horse's mouth tonight. I, what I was saying was comments made in the chamber that make the general public think that we don't support them based on a way we vote and that's not true. So I was clarifying the comment that was made. And I just, I, I find it hard to see, you know, what's, like you've said, director, is what's the end game with that? By getting the residents together, getting their hopes up that we might be able to do something, yet traffic is going to say, well, no, we've already proved it, you've got the money, do the work. Because we're the people that tell you what to do on that road because it's our road. That doesn't mean that we don't support the residents because we've had consultation. I've, I've had people chat to me about it. I had a site visit with somebody. Do I agree it's in the right spot? Probably not, but at the end of the day, it's not a council road. And I think that with us being mindful of where we spend money and, and our restrictions on, you know, looking at our finances, I think that we could be investing money in this and still have the exact same outcome. Thank you.
Councillor Moores.
Thank you. Now, this is aimed at the director, you know my sights. As a quick look now, I've just noticed this was on display on the 9th of October to the 22nd of November. It was on, it's on the website and now it's nearly March. Was the consultation done with the, with the residents and was it, were they listened to? Or was it just waved and said, well, that's where it's going?
Director.
Thank you through you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Moores. My understanding is that consultation was undertaken with the residents individually and that, that the feedback was considered and as I mentioned, it was put back to Transport with reference to the, the, the option, the location where it was originally designed, which was further north towards the right-hand bend and relocated back on the basis of connectivity improving safety. I'm unaware of the details of the feedback from the residents unfortunately.
Yeah, so what, what I'm saying is that obviously the residents would have been saying, I don't need it there, I've got to get a caravan out because I'm going to hit it. And it's been ignored. What's frightening me now is that not long down the track, we'll be doing Wallonby Road and are then people going to be listened to who have a problem? Doesn't matter it's a regional road, we're doing it and we still, you still had, you've still done the correspondence by talking to the, the regional people, they didn't come from Sydney to talk to the people on Allandar Road, we went and voted on the council. But we're, obviously they've been completely ignored. It's just concerning, you know? Thank you.
Councillor Olsen, you've spoken.
Questions, Mr Mayor? Two questions. When it was put out on display, you did get complaints, correct?
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. The context of complaints, I'm unsure of.
You did get complaints, yeah. The other reason, another question I have is, why is the crossing being installed on Allandar Road? Why is pedestrian refuge being installed on Allandar Road? Why is pedestrian refuge being installed on Allendale Road?
To provide safe access across Allendale Road for pedestrians and cyclists as part of the Bridges Hill and Oakley Bar.
So it's part of the Bridges Hill, it's part of the Bridges Hill Park, pathway, shared pathway. So this is all, if it wasn't for the Bridges Hill shared pathway, we would not be putting this in there, correct?
Correct.
So if we, as a council, decide we're not going to run the pathway that way, we're going to go a different way, can we go back to Transport New South Wales and ask them to do it in a different location, crossing a different location?
As I mentioned, it's on a state road, so it's dependent on Transport's endorsement.
Sorry, sorry.
It is on a state road, councillor Olson, and it is dependent on Transport's endorsement.
But we can take it back to them, can't we? Yes or no?
We're not, I think.
Can I get a yes or no answer? That's all I'm asking. Can we take it back to Transport New South Wales or not?
We're not here to debate it, the, the director has outlined.
Point of order, Mayor, point of order. I've asked a question, I want a yes or no answer. That's all I'm asking. I'm not debating him.
councillor Olson, you are debating the director's response. You asked the director around the consent for the project and what would happen if we did other things. And he outlined that anything would need, any changes to that would need the consent of Transport for New South Wales. He clearly answered you.
Can we take it back to Transport New South Wales? Do the change apply, okay? Yes or no?
He has said any change would be required, the consent of Transport for New South Wales. The, the question's answered. The, the question has been answered, councillor Olson. Any change that needs to be made would be, we're, we're not going through. councillor Grine has the call. Councillor, councillor Grine has the call.
Oh, thank God for that. Thank you. My question is to the director as well. I have a similar situation with young Esther, which I think I've spoken to you about before in regards to being on a state road. What can we do for this gentleman, if anything?
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thanks for the question, councillor Grine. We can take it to Transport for recommendation, we can take it to Transport for discussion.
Thank you. And the process for doing that, is that just a matter of sending an email like I've done with previous with Esther? Or is it going through this?
There's various avenues. If you address it to Transport via email, you can, you can call, you can actually send a recommendation through. There's a number of avenues to contact customer services through Transport.
Thank you, director.
councillor Painter.
Just a quick question to the director of works in infrastructure, through you, Mr Mayor. I know you didn't carry out the consolidated process, but do you know, do you know, or preview to New South Wales roads and traffic? Do they do online, or do they do door knocking or painful jobs? And it's very bad, this guy who's 80-year-old, whether he has access to internet and that kind of stuff to have a reply to the development.
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor, and thanks for the question, councillor Painter. Transport have not been directly accountable for the consultation process during the public exhibition period. It's through our project management team. And as I understand, they've undertaken a personalised consultation with each of the residents that are affected by the, the location of the refuge to this point.
So there is painful jobs or a door knock in, in addition to an online forum?
Yeah, the online forum is part of the public display period, which is on our website.
councillor Olson, you, I think that was on from before, councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just to clarify this, we had a memo issued about this back on the 25th of January, is that? Councillor Olson, was there a subsequent inquiry? Did you make inquiries subsequent to that memo? Because the memo sort of answers all the questions we've been backwards and forwards in around here tonight. On-site meetings were held with X, Y, Z property owners. It, it notes the, the safety, the site distances, the stopping and parking zones. It notes that they're amending the bus zone to include timed parking periods where people will be able to park after this improvement that they can't do now. It, it was a fairly straightforward response to what essentially is a road safety issue. Now, I get that there will be affected residents that aren't happy with, with this. Just because they're not happy doesn't mean we're not listening, doesn't mean we're not concerned, doesn't mean we don't support them, doesn't mean, doesn't mean any of those wild, crazy conspiracy theories. This is a road safety issue, and it's a, I, I hope they are too. I'm, I'm happy to discuss this with, with anybody happily. Because this, this is about broader road safety, and those are the things that Transport for New South Wales consider. So I'm, I'm comfortable that moving forward with this, that all of those options have been exhausted. It's, it's well and good to come here and say there's more to think about, but they've already been considered and you've already had the answers. To bring this now is, it's a wonderful example of grandstanding and giving some of the information. So I, I would just think that cooler heads should prevail here.
No, no further debate, we'll put the item. So all those in favour of the motion? There was no request for rider. Well, there was no, no more. councillor Jerd, would you like to write a reply?
I look, I just want to just say, this is just blown up way more than what it should have been. This is just simply about trying to slow down the process to make sure that these residents actually are heard. Because they have come to me saying that they're not being listened to. This is going to create major issues for them to have access to their property. And I'm pretty sure anybody sitting here that has family that are older would not like this happening to their grandparents, that they're not going to be able to have access to the property. So this is a major concern, and you can laugh what you want. I just want to make sure that we go back to Transport for New South Wales and see to make sure this is the safest access point. Because I personally would not cross the road there with my four-year-old. There would be no way in hell I would cross that road with my four-year-old. It is not a zebra crossing, it is a refuge. So there's no way I would cross it, and especially not with a bike. Just saying.
With no further debate, we'll put the item. All those in favour? councillors Moors, Painter, Watten, Olson and Jerd. Those against? councillor Jackson, Dun, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell will declare it lost. Are there any councillor reports? No councillor reports. We'll now move into the confidential session of council. councillor Burke, second to councillor Grine. Those in favour? councillors Jackson, Moors, Dun, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell. Those against? councillor Olson, councillor Jerd, will defer it carried. We'll now leave the gallery.
Thank you councillors, in a report from the confidential session of council meeting, council moved following motions, procedural motion that council endorsed the extension of the meeting time until the end of the report from the confidential session. We then moved on to reports G M U one twenty twenty four where council resolved the following: One, the council receives and notes the final investigation report into the code of conduct complaint against councillor Jurd provided by separate confidential enclosure. Two, that the oral submission from councillor Jurd addressing the investigator's recommendation be received and noted. Three, that council accepts the findings in the final investigation report that councillor Jurd breached clauses three point one, three point two, three point three, three point seven, three point eight, three point one oh, seven point two, seven point six and eight point two one of the code of conduct by a) making statements in the public domain via social media that inferred council staff were not telling the truth and b) by making statements in the public domain via social media that a reasonable and informed person would find belittling and harassment and c) by knowingly conducting herself in an improper and unethical manner and d) by acting contrary to council's administrative policies. Four, that council in accordance with section four four zero G of the local government act and based on the findings and recommendation of the final investigation report formally censured councillor Jurd for a) breaching clause three point one of the code on the grounds that councillor Jurd conducted herself in a manner that one brought Cessnock City Council or other council officials into disrepute, two is contrary to statutory requirements or the council's administrative requirements or policies, three is improper and improper or unethical, four is an abuse of power, five causes compromises or involves intimidation or verbal abuse and six constitutes harassment or bullying behaviour under this code or is unlawfully discriminatory. B) breaching clause three point two, please, please remove this person from the gallery, please remove the person from the gallery. Please. I. Be asking the general manager to investigate the threats made towards councillors after the meeting and considering that were just made towards councillors and seeing what can be done to prevent them returning to the chamber. We're up to clause B which was breaching clause three point two of the code on the grounds that councillor Jurd did not act lawfully or honestly and exercised a reasonable degree of care and diligence in carrying out her functions. C) breaching clause three point three of the code on the grounds that councillor Jurd did not consider issues consistently promptly and fairly and not deal with matters in accordance with established procedures in non discriminatory manner. D) breaching clause three point seven of the code on the grounds that councillor Jurd engaged in harassment by demonstrating behaviour towards a person that i) is not warranted by, not wanted by the person, two offends, humiliates or intimidates the person and three creates a hostile environment. Point E that breaching clauses three point eight and three point one zero of the code on the grounds that councillor Jurd engaged in bullying behaviour towards others including the following behaviour that may involve: one aggressive threatening or intimidating conduct, two belittling or humiliating comments, three spreading malicious rumours, four teasing practical jokes or initiation ceremonies, five exclusion from work related events, four six unreasonable work expectations including too much or too little work or work below a worker's, beyond a worker's skill level, seven displaying offensive material, eight pressure to behave in an inappropriate manner. F breaching clause seven point two of the code on the grounds that councillor Jurd conducted herself in a manner where she must not one direct staff or other than the, by giving appropriate direction to the general manager by way of council or committee resolution or by the mayor or administrator exercising their functions under section two two six of the local government act. Two in any public or private forum direct or influence or attempt to direct or influence any other member of the staff of the council or a delegate of the council in the exercise of the functions of the staff member or delegate. G breaching clause eight point two one of the code on the grounds that councillor Jurd misuse social media to post or share comments, photos, videos, electronic recordings or other information that one compromises your capacity to perform your official duties in an unbiased manner, two has the potential to have a negative impact on your working relationships within the council or with external parties, three is offensive humiliating, threatening or intimidating to other council officials or those that deal with the council, four has the capacity to damage the council's reputation or contains content about the council that may be misleading or deceptive, five contains allegations of suspected breaches of the code or information about consideration of a matter under the procedures or six could be perceived by an official comment, could be perceived to be an official comment on behalf of the council where you have not been authorised to make such comment. Point five that council refer the matter to the office of local government for further actions under the misconduct provisions of the local government act. Six that the mayor writes to the office of local government outlining the reasons for referral. We then resolve the following relation to G M U two twenty twenty four. One that council receives and notes the final investigation report in relation to a code of conduct complaint against councillor Olson provided by separate confidential enclosure. Two that the oral submission from councillor Olson addressing the investigator's recommendation be received and noted. Three that council accepts the findings in the final investigation report that councillor Olson breached clauses three point one, three point two, three point three, three point seven, three point eight, three point one zero, seven point two, seven point six and eight point two one of the code of conduct by a) making statements in the public domain via social media that inferred council staff were not telling the truth and b) by making statements in the public domain via social media that a reasonable and informed person would find belittling and harassment and c) knowingly, by knowingly conducting himself in an improper manner, improper and unethical manner and d) by acting contrary to council's administrative policies. Four that council in accordance with section four four zero G of the local government act and based on the findings and recommendation of the final investigation report formally censured councillor Olson for a) breaching clause three point one of the code on grounds that councillor Olson conducted himself in a manner that one brought council, Cessnock City Council or other council officials into disrepute, two is contrary to statutory requirements or council's administrative requirements or policies, three is improper or unethical, four is an abuse of power, five causes compromises or involves intimidation or verbal abuse and six constitutes harassment or bullying behaviour under this code or is unlawfully discriminatory. B breaching clause three point two of the code on the grounds that councillor Olson did not act lawfully or honestly in exercising a reasonable degree of care and diligence in carrying out his duties, his functions. C breaching clause three point three of the code on the grounds that councillor Olson did not consider issues consistently promptly and fairly and did not deal with matters in accordance with established procedures in a non discriminatory manner. D breaching clause three point seven of the code on the grounds that councillor Olson engaged in harassment by demonstrating behaviour towards a person that one is not wanted by the person, two offends, humiliates or intimidates the person and three creates a hostile environment. E breaching clauses three point eight and three point one zero of the code on the grounds that councillor Olson engaged in bullying behaviour towards others including the following behaviour that may involve: one aggressive threatening or intimidating conduct, two belittling or humiliating comments, three spreading malicious rumours, four teasing practical jokes or initiation ceremonies, five exclusion from work related events, six unreasonable work expectations including too much or too little work or work below or beyond a worker's skill level, seven playing, displaying offensive material, eight pressure to behave in an inappropriate manner. F. material; eight, pressure to behave in an inappropriate manner; F, breaching clause seven point two of the code on the grounds that councillor Olson conducted himself in a manner where he must not, one, direct council staff other than by giving appropriate direction to the general manager by way of council or committee resolution or by the mayor or administrator using, exercising their functions under section two two six of the Local Government Act; two, in any public or private forum, direct or influence or attempt to direct or influence any other member of the staff of the council or a delegate of the council in the exercise of the functions of the staff member or delegate; G, breaching clause eight point two one of the code on the grounds that councillor Olson misused social media to post or share comments, photos, videos, electronic recordings or other information that: one, compromises your capacity to perform your official duties in an unbiased manner; two, has the potential to have a negative impact on your working relationships within the council or with external parties; three, is offensive, humiliating, threatening or intimidating to other council officials or those that deal with the council; four, has the capacity to damage the council's reputation or contain content about the council that may be misleading or deceptive; five, contains allegations of suspected breaches of this code or information about the consideration of a matter under the procedures; or six, could be perceived to be an official comment on behalf of the council where you have not been authorised to make such comment; five, that council refer the matter to the office of local government for further consideration under the misconduct provisions of the Local Government Act; six, that the mayor writes to the office of local government outlining the reasons for referral. With that, I will close the meeting.